Teen Work Session of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Ms. Bircham, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Maslin.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
Mayor Freiling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Here.
Mr. Zhang.
Here.
First item on our agenda, Items for City Council Meeting of January 10, 2019, Council Preview. Mr. Trivitt, anything you'd like to highlight for us?
You know, we've got a fairly full agenda for our Thursday. We've got a couple of public hearings. The first one has to deal with short-term rentals, and the next one has to do with expanding the food truck regulations. And then, under New Business, we have an award from the Tourism Promotion Contingency Fund to be considered, a proposed ordinance that revises the tour guide licensing process, a new contract for recycling, the Fourth Amendment amended memorandum of understanding between the Williamsburg City Council and the Williamsburg Redevelopment Housing Authority, and appointments to boards and commissions.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Trivitt?
No, sir.
Good. This takes us to the public comment section of our meeting, where we welcome anyone who would like to address council on the items that we will be hearing about today or discussing on Thursday. I have two speakers cards that I'll... Would you like to speak now? Or would you...
Wait until after?
Okay. Mr. Lappertini, you also? Okay. If anybody else would like to address council, please come forward. Seeing no one, we will move on to the background presentations and discussion, and we'll hold off on the first item and come back to that if we have time, which takes us to Mr. Barham, presentation regarding the change in council agenda software from Granicus to iCompass. Welcome, Mr. Barham.
Thank you, Mr. Freiling. Good afternoon, Mayor Freiling, members of council. Today, we're going to talk about agenda and meeting management software, where we're currently at, where we're going, and then kind of talk about a little timeline as to what we need to do to get us there. So, first, our current environment, as you're all very well aware, Granicus has been in place in the city since about 2009. Granicus, at its core, is a video solution. It's not a agenda creation and management solution. So, a lot of the creation part of the agenda to go with the video piece is... It's a lot of work for the clerk and for the city manager's office. So, that was primarily the primary reason to... That necessitated us going out and looking at other processes. So, again, very cumbersome, the time it takes them to create the agendas, the time it takes them to manage this entire process is lengthy and inefficient at best. So, that got us looking at a new software that would help with this. As part of the evaluation process, we brought a lot of... Everyone onboard, kind of made a very large team for a software package of this size, because we wanted to ensure that everyone that was going to use it, that was going to touch it, had a say in the process here. So, the clerk was involved, the city manager's office, almost the entire office was involved, as were the planning clerks and the IT staff. As part of the evaluation process, we wanted to make sure that we were looking for systems that could get us... That were efficient, that were easy to use, that we maintained a certain level of features and functionality. We didn't go backwards on any of that. And then, we were going to look at costs. This was a mid-year budget move, so we wanted to make sure that there was no increased cost, that it was budget-neutral in terms of what we're paying Granicus versus what we're paying iCompass. So, iCompass, we looked at those three vendors there, iCompass, Civic Clerk, and Prime Gov. We selected iCompass as the vendor for this. So, who is iCompass? They're a local government technology company, primarily agenda and meeting management. Allows you to really easily manage, not only the meetings and the minutes, that entire meeting process, but also the boards and commissions aspect of that. So, if we have people roll onto a board, roll off of a board, or if we have vacancies within a board, the clerks can then manage that entire process. We wanted to make sure that we protected ourselves feature-functionality-wise moving forward, that we weren't going to go backwards on any of this. So, to do that, we had to make sure there was, at a minimum, an iPad app or a mobile-friendly website that would allow us to access the agendas, make annotations if you use that functionality within the app. Prior to even... Even prior to moving to or evaluating vendors, we were already looking at moving away from the proprietary nature of the video piece of Granicus over to more device and person-agnostic solutions such as YouTube. So, this has YouTube built inherently into the application, so our new stream will be all done via YouTube Live, and we'll still maintain the Facebook Live that we currently do as well. And we wanted to make sure that we have kind of future-proof ourselves, make sure that we have the capabilities moving forward that we don't currently have, one of those being electronic voting. So, whereas now, it's time for you to vote on a particular item in the agenda, the clerk calls, or you make a motion, call second, the clerk calls the roll, and then everybody votes. In this scenario, and I would caution you that we're not going to dive directly into this, this is going to be something phased in over time. So, the clerk would then set it up and say, "Okay, you're ready to vote," and then on your iPads, it would pop up and say, "You know, this is what you're voting on, yea, nay, abstain," whatever the case may be, and you vote. And then, there would be monitors in this room that people in the audience could then see how you voted, so we maintain that level of transparency. So, a couple of screenshots here. This is an example of the public-facing portal that will replace the existing e-meetings page. A couple of things to notice, the branding, the look and feel is consistent with the current city website. On the right, you have your scheduling meetings, various calendars, social media connections. And then, in the middle, you have a calendar. One of the more important things for us was to allow for those meetings to be scheduled via a calendar, and then have that where you can download those meetings to your personal devices, so that you're always... You always know when the meetings are going to be scheduled, so you can subscribe to those calendars. You can search or go and see the various meetings that are out there. And then, the search capabilities of the system are very impressive. You can go and keyword search on anything, and then, within the documents within the video, all of that information is brought up so that you can go right to it. This is actually the bottom piece, the bottom part of the page, just by virtue of real estate. We don't have a way to... It would be way too scrunch for us to do it in one screenshot. So, you'll notice up at the top left, Meet Your Council. This would be contact information, potentially biographical information, whatever the case may be, so that everyone knows who their city council members are, who the planning commission is, and so forth. Have the ability to access the live stream. We talked about search and subscribe to various calendars. The attendance and voting piece will allow for... It will show your attendance for a particular meeting, and then, it'll also show how you voted on a particular agenda item. So, if someone wanted to go back a couple of years from now and say, "How did I vote on this particular agenda item?" You'll be able to see that. All that will be maintained in a record. And because it's a complete system, that information then flows into the minutes, making it a lot easier for the clerk to generate those minutes. The online open forum, we'll link that to our publicinput.com forum, and then, of course, the meeting archives down there in the bottom left. We are going to bring in probably the last three to four years of meetings that were currently archived on our e-meetings page, upload those and link them up here, so that we maintain all of those in the same spot. This last screenshot is... This is the screenshot from an iPad of the agenda, so this would be what you would be looking at during a regular meeting. One of the problems with Granicus is that, in order to make changes to these, to the agenda, whether it be adding a seal, changing the location, the date, the time, a lot of that stuff, you can't do very easily. In fact, a lot of it, you have to contact Granicus and have them do it, then you have to pay for that time. These are essentially Word documents that we then have that capability to edit. We can change the order of the items within the agenda, it's simply dragging and dropping. And then, we have links to any supporting documentation, as you'll notice there in the middle on 5A. You would click that, and then, that would show you that particular supporting documentation. The last thing on this is, you'll notice on the right, that toolbar that's just kind of hanging out there, that will kind of follow you through wherever you're at within the application, allowing you to make edits, highlight, make a note, you know, mark a page, whatever the case may be. You can do all of that within the application. So, this is the direction that we're going, the timeline for this, the first phase, agenda creation, the meeting management, and the public portal. So, pretty much everything we've talked about to this point is going to... We're hopeful that that's going to be live for the February meetings. The minutes management piece of that, so all the information that then flows from the meeting into the creation of the minutes, we're expecting that in March. And then, the last piece would be action tracking. So, submitting an item and then tracking it through its entire process from submittal to approval, depending on the item itself. We expect to see that, hopefully, in April. That's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barham. And let me just start off by saying, your presentation is purely informational. We're not making a decision.
No, sir.
You've already made that.
The group has already made that.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
So, I don't have any questions. I would look forward to, you know, having the opportunity for staff to be more efficient in their time, so that they can use those resources, you know, in a better way. So, and if it provides greater functionality for the users and allows for transparency, then I think it's a good move.
Thanks, Mark, for your presentation. Just to echo with the Vice Mayor regarding efficiency and staff these days, that's certainly very important. It seems because... So, I do have a question. Because it seems that this software is a little bit more expansive than just the Granicus capability with the maintenance aspect and the operating aspect, are we expected to... Is it going to be kind of around the same cost?
It is. As part of the negotiation, we said, "This is what we're... This is our threshold for this, because it was a mid-budget year purchase, so this is all we're going to pay." And we negotiated with them to get them to agree to that and maintain that for a three-year period.
So, every time you need to contact them for an operational issue, that should be unlike what happened with Granicus?
That's covered.
Okay. And this, I don't know if you've mentioned this already, but this software is around the same cost as Granicus?
It is exactly the same.
Exactly the same cost. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, for the presentation. And it sounds like, from what you said, that we wouldn't need to contact iCompass as much as we contact Granicus anyway, because of the way that the system is set up. And isn't 10 years about sort of the lifespan of any software anyway, I would think it sort of exceeds the software lifespan?
It did. We were at the point to where we needed to do something, whether we stayed with Granicus and upgraded with Granicus, or moved on to a different solution. But there was, obviously, the mitigating factors that we talked about, and they kind of necessitated this move, through a new platform.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. As you know, when I joined the city council, I was excited about looking at the e-comment feature we had, and half the time before meetings, it wasn't available. And there were several comments on there, and then, I'd start to dig into them and realize they were two to three years old.
Sure.
How does this system help us get back to an e-comment type platform?
You know, we asked that question in terms of having given people the ability to comment prior to the meeting on a specific agenda item. The response that we got was that was fairly old technology and fairly old way of doing things, and they didn't do that anymore, and they didn't know of any vendors that we're currently doing. I know Granicus is moving away from it. So, their response was the public comment piece of that, on the online publicinput.com piece, as well as good old-fashioned email and such, was the way that they saw their client base moving.
And just to jump onto that, Mark, wasn't that the problem with our current e-commerce portion with Granicus? They did an upgrade of the software, and when they did the upgrade, the process that allowed that to work stopped working, and they were unable to repair it?
Yes. Thank you.
So, Mr. Barham, if I'm a resident of Williamsburg, and I like to watch city council meetings on television, or I like to go back and look at prior meetings on the website through the video feature, or I just like to browse through the minutes, how has any of that changed for me as the end user?
It really doesn't change for you as the end user. You go to a different spot. We'll obviously make that... We'll replace that piece on the public website. We'll take the Granicus piece off and put this on there. But from an end-user perspective, in terms of looking at video, going through minutes, it really doesn't change. It would... I would argue that it makes it somewhat easier because of the... Because we're streaming via YouTube, and it doesn't really care what device you're using, whereas with Granicus, it's tied to an older technology that's really specific to computers and platforms.
And is there anything about Granicus that staff will miss?
The clerk is shaking her head at me, so I'm going to take that as a no.
Will miss getting to say the word Granicus.
Actually, I had one follow-up question, if you don't mind, Ms. Mary. How does this affect or impact the ongoing, I guess, practices that you guys are exploring with regards to streaming? I saw that it hooks up to YouTube and all that. Does that affect the software?
It doesn't, but it makes it easier for us.
Okay.
The encoders that they use, the way that they take the video signal and code it for the Internet and then put it out, are significantly cheaper and much smaller. They're literally about that big. So, there's a thought that we could invest in other encoders, and that makes that part of it simple. There's still the setup piece of that, and there's still the staff time piece of that that we have to resolve, but it effectively would make that part of it easier.
Basically, probably will make it even a better process in terms of finding ways to stream those boards and commission meetings that we had, what, last year? So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Barham. We appreciate your presentation, and it's great to know this is coming onboard. It'll make things simpler for staff, and that you'll probably end up having to train us further on it.
I would expect to see... Hopefully, I'm going to see you all during your briefings in February.
Great. Thank you very much. I will now go back to Item A, under Background Presentations and Discussion, a presentation concerning the 50th Year of an Occasion for the Arts. Welcome.
Thank you all, and I take it from that, I was a few minutes late, and that might have delayed you all, so I apologize for that tardiness. Thank you all so much for the opportunity to come back and share with you what we felt was a great success in our 50th year, and just a continuation of what the community has built over these 50 years, and hopefully, a helpful look forward. I will note at the beginning that I am here alone, as opposed to the original plan, which was to have Nancy Wigley with me, who is our new president, as I'll be serving as vice president going forward. She is homesick, and then Leo Charette, our executive director, is undergoing some medical treatment, and so was not able to be here as well. But they both send their appreciation and thanks, so I will present alone. You all have the presentation, and I'll just briefly walk through it, hoping not to read you every bullet point, so as not to bore you. But in January of 2018, so a year ago, we gathered in this room and did request funding for our 50th year, and you all were kind enough in April, I guess, when we met again in April, to approve that. And we used that $25,000 that you all graciously invested in the show, really for two initiatives, one, to operate the expanded event, and then, two, to launch an initiative to raise friends and awareness within the community, specifically through a 50th gala or event that we held a couple of weeks prior to the show here in the Stryker Building, and also featured Carlton Abbott at that. The support that the city has frequently given to an occasion for the arts is a core part of how we've had the confidence to move forward and to expand the show over the last six or seven years. And I just want to make sure that we reiterate how appreciative we are of that confidence and that support, and how much of a difference it's made to go from where we were seven years ago as a Sunday afternoon show to a two-and-a-half-day festival with the reach that we have in marketing. So, thank you again for your vision. The 50th year, which I know many of you were able to attend that weekend, we had great weather, which is obviously a big impact to our show, tremendous attendance, which we'll review, and great sales. So, to us, it was just a success on all of those levels. The 50th anniversary was also a success. As you may remember, we had some weather this fall, and about a week and a half prior to this event, there was a significant storm that came through. We do feel like some of our RSVPs and the ability to get attendance at that event was impacted negatively by some of those delays. There we go. Thank you. So, we did not see the attendance that we thought we would. Thankfully, we had built that event to be scaled, so we were able to pull back on some of our costs. We did end up with about 110 folks who were there, had a great gathering, really powerful remarks shared by people who had been at the show when it was first founded, and by Carlton himself and others. But one of the items in the presentation you'll see here is that, as we had allocated those monies, we really didn't end up needing all $12,500 for that. So, if it is appropriate, I've brought back a check for $3,500 to return, and we can discuss that, but would wanted to give it back to you all and say that we didn't need it for the intended purpose. So, looking at the impact of your investment and the year last year specifically, we had artist sales of roughly $545,000. And a couple of these numbers, I'll just note, are extrapolated from our artist survey that we send out after the event to the artists who come and make Williamsburg their home for that weekend. We did get a very high response rate to that survey, 81% of our artists responded. So, this is, I think, you know, pretty solid information. But that's a 7% increase... Sorry. Seven percent of that is the state sales tax, $38,000. It's about a 5% increase from the prior year, when we were at $498,000. But we also had a lower response rate the prior year. So, we think that it was probably a little north of 5% increase. We did have 292 hotel nights for the artists, many of those occurring in Colonial Williamsburg properties. And then, we partnered with Colonial Williamsburg in an expanded way this year, which we were very excited about. They had us listed on their website, they put us in two of their email blasts, trying to draw people to town that weekend. And through that collaboration, they were able to let us know that they had a 9% to 12% increase in admissions, depending on which day of the weekend you looked at, Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, and then, an 8% to 39% increase in program tickets, the biggest coming actually on Sunday of that weekend. The attendance via police estimate is 30,000 to 35,000, up from the prior year of 25,000 to 30,000, although, you know, that is an estimate and very difficult to get a read on, since we are an open, very porous show. Hotels, meals, parking attractions are not something that we're able to track with our budget and who we are, but obviously, we anticipate and believe that's a significant impact. And then, you know, promotions with local businesses, trying to build the image and awareness of those, just a few of those listed here, but many sponsors and contributors to the weekend that we're able to partner with. I did provide in the minutes, when I sent this on, a letter. Were you all able to view that in advance? So, I don't know that that's helpful for me to read it, but I submitted it as an example of the goodwill that the show has created, not just among our artists, but I think a similar goodwill with patrons. I referenced back to when Hurricane Joaquin canceled the show three years ago, and the number of calls I got on my cellphone, because it was on the website, from people in New York and New Hampshire and Seattle, you know, saying, "Is the show happening? I have flights booked, but I just want to see if it's happening before I fly." Come every year. And so, I think, you know, I just really appreciated getting this letter from an artist in Garden City, New York, about how this show has impacted her connection to our town. The next slide is a look at our 50th year finances. So, just a high-level review here, roughly $145,000 of revenue and $137,000 of expenses. You see the large items there, but artists continue to supply, you know, close to 50% of our revenue. Individual and corporate donors, a substantial increase. We go back again, six or seven years ago, and we were less than $10,000. The areas that we've spent a lot more money on in the last couple of years, obviously, larger infrastructure, bigger tents, more security associated with that, increased marketing, marketing budget, you know, $4,000 just, you know, five years ago. Performing arts increased by about 40% over the last couple of years. And then, the 50th anniversary event, obviously, this year was a one-year item. We don't anticipate doing that annually. None of this would be possible without our team, so in addition to your all's support, we have a great group of volunteer board members, which are listed on the next slide that I won't read, but I think you'll see they're, you know, tremendous representatives of our community, businesses, organizations, and they are, you know, renewed in their support for the organization in the years to come. In addition to that, obviously, the Williamsburg Arts Commission, as well as Colonial Williamsburg and Merchant Square, as well as a host of supporters who don't give us money but support us in other ways. So, this is truly a team effort. And you see here our list of board members, who I could go on for a long time about each one of them, but tremendous impact. I guess I should note that one of the changes for next year is I will be stepping down as president and serve as vice president. Nancy Wigley, I think, is very well-qualified to lead our organization into what we believe the next big initiative is, which is enhanced community involvement and support. So, we've done a great job of, you know, getting the expansion with the artists and the higher artist quality, and getting consultants in the door, and we think this community really needs to come alongside the event and support it in even bigger and greater ways, both through donations and through involvement. And Nancy and her family, her mother was a past producer of the show, three of her sisters have served on the board, along with her. Her husband was in the J.C.'s back when they used to put up the chicken wire and the zigzag on Duke Gloucester Street. So, just a lot of passion for gathering people, and I will continue to serve primarily in a fundraising role with the board, but certainly involved in logistics and vision for them. So, going forward, you know, we continue to believe that we're an organization worthy of support and investment with the opportunity to expand the show and maintain its top-show status, looking to continue to expand in marketing, programming, new programs, specifically Saturday night, we still feel is a big hole in our weekend, that we could have some kind of headline concert, and continue to do our best to gather our own resources like we have in the past, so that we can be putting the bulk of the funding responsibility on ourselves. And we, you know, share here some of the things that, you know, we have to plan for. We're not in a position to continue to receive the type of support from the community and from the city that we have in the past. So, with that, I do thank you for your past support, your support in 2018, specifically in our 50th year. It's been a joy over my time as president to collaborate with you all, and I look forward to being a part of that in the future, and happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Honenberg.
Mr. Honenberg, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for your leadership on the occasion for the arts for these last couple of years as president. What are you going to do with your free time as you step down? You know, one of the signature events of our community, and so I'm glad that it was a success. Being the 50th year, did you see greater number of artists, greater number of revenue, and how did it compare to last year? And do you think the efforts that you put into the year 50 will help you in 51 in terms of growing and just...
Absolutely. So, we look at it from a couple of different sleeves. So, the artists are a really important part of this, right? Like, no one comes to the art show if there aren't great artists. And I think, you know, for anyone who saw it, I would say this was our best year in terms of the quality of the art, the diversity of the art. Our applications were up very slightly. We think, you know, we had such a strong response in our survey, and all the artists had such good sales, we have a lot of confidence to believe they'll want to come back next year, and then, we'll attract new artists as well. So, we actually have not expanded the footprint of the event in a couple of years intentionally. I think I've mentioned that to council possibly in the past, but we look at sort of like William &amp; Mary, you know, you have so many seats and so many beds on the campus, but we want to attract more and more qualified candidates, so that we can both put the best people on the street, but also possibly raise the price. So, we had raised the price two years earlier, we kept it steady this year. We've decided in 2019 to keep the price steady, to see if we do get that influx of new artists. Probably in 2020, we're set for a price increase on the artists that would be supported by sales. So, didn't see an increased number, but saw an increase in interest and a great ranking of the show. In terms of sales, you know, I mentioned, you know, we did see more sales. Patrons, it's very hard to measure, but it did seem as though the crowds were higher. Probably the only area that I saw any drop-off was our Friday night event. We did not sell as many tickets on Friday night. Again, I think the weather, not that night, but the weeks in advance, did impact that sum. We also probably made a strategic mistake, and we went with a very specific type of music on Friday night. So, if you didn't want to salsa dance and hear Cuban music on Friday night, you might not have come. In the future, we'll probably be a little more broad with that selection to really create that kickoff-party atmosphere that we would like. But in terms of looking forward, we definitely feel like we gathered the friends and the support that we need. And again, we went into this year hoping to do that. And I think our board is a very small microcosm of what that looks like, but we had more volunteer hours. We actually had volunteers come in and saying, "I brought my friends. Do you have anything for us to do?" And I've been doing this for seven years. We had people there who wanted to work that we didn't have a job for them. That's not normal. So, we do think we're set up very well for the coming years and all that is in store.
Well, again, thank you very much, and I look forward to next year's activities.
Thank you.
Stuart, just want to echo what Doug had said, and just congratulate you, and thank you for your leadership with the occasion for the arts and the nonprofit. I mean, clearly, you steer the organization through its successes to its 50th year. I guess we'll see you around as vice president.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't mind seeing Nancy up there, so I think it'll be, I think the organization's in good hands. If you don't mind going back to the impact presentation slide, how did you devise the range with nine to twelve percent and eight to, is that eight to thirty-nine?
So that was, each day was different? So I could send you the specific numbers. They actually wrote it to me and said, on Friday, it was ten, I don't know the numbers, but Friday, it was ten percent, Saturday, it was nine percent, Sunday, it was eleven percent. So it was different numbers on each of the days.
Okay, understood, because I didn't know if for the nine to twelve percent, that was like a margin error thing, but then eight to thirty-nine would have been obviously a huge margin, so.
Yeah, no, it's different each day. So they're, I think they're pretty specific numbers. Like, I think Sunday, they saw thirty-nine percent increase in their, call it, their program ticket.
Yeah. And in terms of the the future, I think this was in your last slide, but in terms of the future, you had mentioned very broadly, like, expanded marketing. What does that entail? Any, could you give us any insight on that?
Yeah, so there are a couple of things that I don't do well, and one of them is marketing. So we've always relied really heavily on our partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, Bob Harris, who had previously been on our board, you know, past, you know, president of the chamber, who were supportive of us. So we've felt some need to expand that. So this year, we have three really exciting new board members. One, who's working at the college now, but had been the executive director of the Winston-Salem Symphony Orchestra. One, who's at the A.L. Works in terms of in charge of their PR and marketing efforts. So we've got some people coming on that are going to have that expertise. I'm not particularly good at that. I think the biggest thing that we feel is that we have a message that can sell in markets outside of Williamsburg. We believe Northern Virginia can travel for this weekend. You know, one of the areas that that we've talked about is partnering with the college and paying, you know, partnering with money to advertise to alumni to get them back on that weekend. But, you know, again, going outside of this area and getting people to to come in, you know, we believe we're up there with shows in St. Louis and in California and McLean, and so that's what we're hoping to do, is sell it there.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your leadership again, Stuart.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Stuart, for coming in and and giving us the presentation. And I do have a couple of questions and comments. One, I thought that the quality and level of artists was better than what I've seen in past years. So I think you all did a really good job assembling a very diverse group of artists. I've already got a number of, took care of a number of gifts I needed at the time. And I did attend the kickoff party on Friday night, and the music was amazing. The band was really, really good. But to your point, I think having a Cuban band, some people were probably a little apprehensive about the type of music, and maybe an audio clip embedded in the sales or the Evite or whatever you do, might be helpful so people could could hear what what the band quality was like. But but I thought it was really good. I also heard really good comments about the youth art and and thought that that was another good dimension to include in the in the weekend. One thing you were talking about partnering with CW and the hotel nights and things like that, is there any way to to gauge how many were non-artist nights? Was there any, because it seems that most of them that you, you know, referenced were artists, but looking at people coming in from out of town who might have stayed here for the event?
Yep. So thank you for your other comments, and I wrote down those ideas. I think they're they're really excellent. And in terms of people not hearing the concert, I think hearing the band ahead of time would have been great. Anyone who was in a four or five-block radius of the concert heard it that night, so we did get some marketing out that evening. But in terms of Colonial Williamsburg, as you know, Colonial Williamsburg went through, you know, pretty significant change last year, and so their lodging and entertainment sort of division or food and lodging was different than their program group. And we partnered much stronger with the program group, I guess I would I would put it that way. So the recording of data and sharing didn't happen as much with the lodging, not from a lack of desire, but I just don't think they had everything as organized and the right contacts for us. I'm in touch with those people, and we continue to maintain that communication, so I think that will get better. But for that reason, the only numbers we have are actually numbers we collected through the artist survey, not from Colonial Williamsburg, on the hotel nights.
Okay.
The program ticket sales, we got directly from Colonial Williamsburg, but I don't have that data. I know it was a very busy weekend from them. You know, there's anecdotal evidence, like the cheese shop telling me it was their best Saturday ever, but but I don't have hotel nights specifically for Colonial Williamsburg due to them not not sharing them or responding, I should say.
So the uptick in admissions and program tickets would be a combination likely of artists, their family, and visitors to Williamsburg during that time period, primarily visitors because the artists would be selling their wares?
Correct. I would think that would be primarily visitors, both because the artists are busy and because I would hope that the number of tickets needed to generate an eight percent increase at Colonial Williamsburg is a lot more than the hundred-and-sixty-five artists that we bring in.
And the last thing is, I know that you all expanded marketing for the fiftieth. Where did you expand that market in, and what kind of media? Was it print media, digital?
It was primarily digital. That was increasingly, that's what our consultants tell us, you know, we should be doing. So it was primarily digital. They, I'd have to send you the report to get it specific in terms of where they spent more than the year before, but I know our digital budget went from like four thousand to eight thousand or something like that last year. So it went pretty substantially higher.
Because one area I think has a lot of artists and interest would probably be the Charlottesville area. I went to a studio art tour myself up there, and they have a very big interest in in the arts.
Absolutely.
And a lot of vendors were here from Charlottesville, too.
Yes. And I mean, I still remember being here last spring and Steve Rose talking about, and I'll get the terminology wrong, but, you know, sort of event-specific marketing for an area like ours that has these sort of year-round draws of Colonial Williamsburg and Busch Gardens and the campus of William &amp; Mary and just sort of the overall beauty of the area, but that stuff's there all the time, right? So that doesn't motivate someone in Charlottesville to say, I'm going to leave my pretty area to go to that pretty area, because I could do that next weekend or the next weekend. But when they find out that there's this event and it's this weekend only, that's the reason to buy. Now, they also want to do Busch Gardens and Colonial Williamsburg and all those things, but that's the reason to buy. And I think you're right. If we can take that message and say, come to the place you already want to come, but for this very specific reason, I think that's a powerful message.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stuart. What are your suggestions on how we can better promote the farmer's market on Saturday morning? Because a lot of people don't know where it goes, and there are actually fewer vendors. I don't think the farmers even show up because of, you know, not having enough space there and not seeing the traffic that they're used to.
Sure. So I've worked with Tracy the last couple of years to try and do that. So we put it in our program, and we actually put in one of our ads in the Gazette, you know, farmer's market still happening in here. We, I think this year, for the first time, we didn't, two years ago, we did not do as good a job of that. So we we hit that better in 2018, but we promoted it on our Facebook page. I think, you know, the only other thing that would come to mind is potentially street signs, you know, those kind of tripod signs that say, you know, farmer's market this way, so that when people show up looking for it, they have a sense of where it is. You know, people stop by our information booth, and we have our information, and then the farmer's market asked us for our information at their booth, because people stopped by there looking for us. We actually didn't have anything to give about the farmer's market. That might have been a good thing for us to have. So those are more on-the-ground, you know, specifics. My recollection is that the farmer's market has a really nice email following, so that's the other big one. And I know they did that, because I'm on the email chain, you know, the week ahead of time. Don't forget, it's still happening. Great weekend to come downtown. Those are the things that come to mind. But hopefully, I had not heard specifically from Tracy afterwards that this year was the challenge the year before was. So I had taken that as good news, but but I should and will connect with her and ask kind of how it went.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Honenberg. On one of your earlier slides, on the fiftieth-year finances, under expenses, you've got the thirty thousand dollars for consultants. Is that the marketing and the fundraising and artistic process consulting?
Yeah, that's primarily the artistic process consulting. So we've just renegotiated that rate, so it'll be a little bit lower this year. Leo Charette, our executive director, who's really brought that artistic quality that Barb mentioned earlier, I think it's a lot better than it used to be, and I don't think it was bad before, but I think it's very, very high quality now. And most of that is driven through Leo's experience and process. So we intentionally invested a little more in that in the first couple of years of him being on board to get that there. It is more in a maintenance mode now, so we're able to pull that back a little bit. But that's primarily his fee, which also covers some logistics and some fundraising efforts.
So you don't see that number being as big in the coming years?
It's, it's, it's going to be twenty-six thousand this coming year, so it's down a little bit. Some of that's because we're bringing more fundraising in-house, I mean, Leo's in-house, but some of it's because I'm going to be doing the fundraising to relieve him of that until he can focus on the artistic. Some of it is that, in the anticipation of him eventually leaving, we don't know if that's two years or three years from now, we're documenting that process, and we'll probably have someone who can more logistically manage it rather than drive it from a leadership standpoint in that role. So I think that's a good number for the next couple of years, and I would hope that we could lower it slightly. But it needs to be there for us to upkeep the general quality.
Well, and I believe all my council colleagues agree with me that, as Mr. Pond said, an occasion for the arts is a terrific festival for this community. It's, it really helps define us in the arts world outside of the boundaries of Williamsburg. But one of the problems is, when you've been around for fifty years, it's easy for people to take your program for granted and just assume it just happens year after year, and may not appreciate the amount of work that goes into making something like this possible, and not just on the day or days of the event, but throughout the entire year. I'm pretty sure that you have stayed busy these past several years, every week of the year, working on some aspect of this. So I just encourage anybody in this community who really enjoys and appreciates an occasion for the arts, get involved, reach out, maybe you can help on a volunteer level. And if that's not your cup of tea, maybe you can help financially, because they can use the money to help make this festival continue and to make it better and better each year. So we very much appreciate what you do.
Well said.
And congratulations on becoming vice president.
Thank you.
Take care.
Very good. Thank you all.
This takes us to our third background presentation, which is discussion and direction to staff concerning the recently completed fire station location analysis. Mr. Trivett?
Yeah. While Mr. Barham is getting us to the presentation. Rescue the clicker. All right. So the fire chief and I are going to take various pieces of this presentation. And I want to start with the purpose statement, because, as you know, this this project is already partially underway in that we have already bonded some portion of the cost of the project. And when I say the project, I'm talking about both the police station renovation and the fire station renovation. The purpose statement that's shown here on the screen comes directly out of the bond documents. And the reason that that's important is because when we sold the bonds, we made certain commitments to the bondholders, and this frames what we are allowed to do with that bonded money. The piece that we don't have here is the actual advertised purpose, which is the public notice piece of it, and that's the other critical component of what we are and are not allowed to do. The thing that I like to highlight when we're looking at the purpose for this is that it's very broad, so we do have a lot of flexibility in how we proceed, as long as we're spending the money on these two public facilities. Next, I wanted to show you a timeline of how we got to where we are, at least as it relates to the fire station discussion. The timeline is just slightly different for the police station piece of this. We really started in 2016, when the fire chief went and met with then-city manager Collins and wanted to talk about planning for a new fire station at some point in the future. That was escalated to a needs assessment that was done by Guernsey Tingle, and then we issued bonds in 2017, taking advantage of low lending rates. What's notable about the bonding process is that we actually borrowed slightly over nineteen million dollars. A portion of that was dedicated to refunding existing debt that the city had, and then the rest of it is available for the project. So about thirteen-point-one, almost fourteen million, I think, is available, if you consider what's committed in the CIP. And so where we are now is deciding what we're going to do in terms of location for the fire station, because as we began to proceed with design kind of thoughts, we ran into questions about, should we be a one or a two-station city? And if so, where should that investment occur? So that brings us to the decision points that are before city councils that relates to this project. As I said, all three, both components, the fire station and the police station. The first thing that we wanted to talk about is going to be the highlight of our discussion today, and that is, are we going to invest primarily in our existing current central station, or are we going to start looking at becoming a two-station model? And if we are, how are we going to do that? The second piece of that is obvious, the layout for that design, and so that we can proceed with the actual cost of what's planned. And then the third decision that we need assistance with is the police station, and we will tackle that on Thursday. Chief?
So everyone's familiar with our response to fire and EMS calls, but what I wanted to do was just provide a list of other services that the department provides that are not the typical fire and EMS responses. And especially since a couple of years ago, if you remember, we came to council and really stepped up our community risk-reduction efforts. Even though you'll see later on that our number, our responses continue to increase, this just gives you an example of other areas that we are involved in that also takes a tremendous amount of time. As I know you're all aware of our special events and the demand that that puts on our fire and EMS services, and that continues to increase. But also, one of our newer programs, the Mobile Integrated Healthcare Program, is growing rapidly and almost beyond the capabilities of our team that's addressing that now. So this is just to give you an idea of the other services that's provided by the department outside of emergency responses.
So as we move into kind of the meat of the presentation, these are the things that we're going to consider as we go forward. We're going to talk a little bit about best practices and benchmarks. We're going to look at some pros and cons. We're going to look at the existing response times and potential location improvements or locations that would improve that response time, and then growth trends for the city. It is important to mention that the reason that we're here today is because, as we began to consider location, the city actually engaged a consultant, Kramer &amp; Associates, to do a study of location for the fire station. And that study has concluded. We have the results of it. This presentation includes both those study results, as well as some in-house data. So best practices, the consultant presents these two arguments for consideration when looking at location decisions for a fire station. And the first one is pretty simple. It is that we ought to really look at what is the best possible service that we can provide without real consideration for cost, and that that service should be spread evenly for the whole community. And then the second argument is one that is similar, except for we should look at areas of high response, and we really should consider what cost does to the overall plan. So the consultant recommends that you have to blend those two together to have an effective answer. As they point out here in this quoted section, if you really just used argument number one, then the data would show that you really need three stations to serve the whole city equitably. And if you look at the second argument specifically, then the central station may be the better choice. So these are the benchmarks that the consultant put up to give us some idea of how similar services provided across the state. The first chart is really just for informational purposes. It shows you where Williamsburg is in terms of population categories and the various types of departments that are servicing localities of that size across the country. And then the the second chart shows you similarly-positioned population locations and square-mile cities. So benchmarks from population to square miles, and shows you the number of stations that are servicing those areas. Now, the chief and I took some time to present this presentation to the various shifts of the fire department, and I see some of them are here today. And the question that I asked right here was, what's missing from this chart? And most of them answered that it's response times, right? I mean, we can compare square miles, we can compare population, but if you're not comparing response times, then it's difficult to draw a real conclusion from the number of stations that are servicing it. So while this information is helpful, because it shows us what our peer agencies might be doing, the critical piece of information, response times, is missing.
And and also the response numbers. And I think we are-
That's what I meant to say.
Yeah.
I said response times, but I was thinking response numbers. Exactly. All right. So the next thing that we added, this is our data, is as a benchmark, is the city of Pecosin. And the reason that we added it was because we thought that it was a decent example of what we are talking about. It's a two-station solution for a city that is similarly sized to us, if you extract out the wetlands and marsh area. Pecosin's a much larger city with that wetland area that's included. And what is striking about this data is there are two types of response times shown there, eight minutes and four minutes. And what is striking about this data is there are two types of response times shown there, eight minutes and four minutes. And the way that I like to describe this is the eight-minute response time is the must-have, that's the one that we're shooting for. And the four-minute response time is the nice-to-have. That is the, obviously, if we can grow that, we want to. And I think what's striking about this is despite the fact that the city of Pecosin has a two-station model, they're still only reaching 66% of the total addresses of the city in that eight-minute response time. And of course, this is calculated just on drive time, it doesn't consider traffic implications.
If you see that color in the middle, that the darker color in the middle represents the overlap from the two-station districts.
So pros and cons. This is a slide that is interesting in that the data that's shown is a matrix similar to how we would score an RFP or a grant application. And this is the result of the study, the first draft of the study coming back and saying that there really is no clear answer when asked the question, should we be one station or two stations? The consultant said both are great options. I think that's an actual quote from that first draft. And so we asked them to go back and sort of try to score the two options in this format to give us some indication of which one might be a preferred option. And so they went back and they came back with this matrix. And, you know, the chief and I were initially disappointed in it because if you look closely, what you'll see is that the criteria from one column to the next are not the same. And so it's very difficult to draw any kind of correlation between what a score represents. And then also, at the bottom, the one-station solution is missing a category completely. So it's not even an equal comparison. So, but if you disregard the scores that are shown, what you're left with is a decent list of pros and cons, kind of conversely, for each option that's provided by the consultant. And so obviously, there are strengths and weaknesses to both scenarios. At the bottom of this are some numbers for construction, which we're gonna talk about next.
So this is some information provided by the consultant as well. One of the questions that came up as we presented to the shifts is if you look at that new single-station solution at 11.6 and a two-station solution at 12.8, a $1.2 million difference. That single-station solution was looking at the original Guernsey Tingle needs assessment that said we needed approximately 35,000 square feet to meet the needs of the fire department. So they were looking at that 135,000-square-foot station. And then the two-station solution, the consultant was looking at building two stations at the same time. There's considerable cost because you have two projects going at the same time. And each of those facilities are much smaller than the 35,000-square-foot facility. We still think, obviously, we don't know how accurate those numbers are with today's construction costs. But that's the reason for the slight difference in the two-station solutions. One of the things, if you recall, in the budget retreat from last year, that we, I talked about staffing and needed additional staffing. And regardless of where this project goes, whether it's a one-station solution or a two-station solution, the staffing that we need is four additional firefighter medics and three additional supervisor positions, lieutenant positions. Those, approximately $70,000 with salary and benefits for the four new positions annually, that's about $300,000 addition to our operational budget. As well as, we used the formula for calculating annual maintenance on a new facility at about $67,000. So roughly, you're looking at an additional $400,000 operational cost to our budget. And that staffing's needed regardless, again, if it's a one-station solution or a two-station solution. And this was a familiar slide to you from the budget retreat last year as well. And this just goes in, fortunately, thanks to city council, we added one and a half FTE positions last year. The half being we added, you added benefits to a contract position. That contract, with the addition of those benefits, that position was put in operations. So it really gave us two additional positions in operations. And we just lost that position in the admin section. So this lays out the minimum staffing of 11, but a overall staffing of 13 for each shift to account for time off. So that's where the numbers add up. And that keeps Tower 10 staffed 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, as well as the second medic staffed at all times.
So the next slide takes us into the next category of conversation, and that is response times. So this shows you the five steps in overall response times. And what's interesting is we're showing you six. And that's because time to patient is highlighted here. The city of Williamsburg does an outstanding job of tracking their response time in each one of these categories. But they pay particular attention to time to patient. Because when we look at response times later in the slides, we're gonna be looking at the time from when the call actually comes into the 911 dispatch center to the time that they're with the patient on scene. And a large portion of that is going from the vehicle to the patient in a lot of cases. As you can see here, we've got some FEMA data on the side there that is showing you what's reported from stations kind of around the country or departments around the country. Only 15% report that they are responding on average in a less than three-minute response. 16% of those reporting are a four-minute response. And 61%, the vast majority, are less than six minutes on average.
Can I ask you a question about that? Is the four-minute 16% exclusive of the 15% three-minute?
I believe so. I think so. I'd have to go back and look at the data.
So this particular slide shows from 2005 to 2018, the increase in the number of responses. Obviously, one of our big concerns is that increase in response. The physical and mental effect that it has on our employees, as well as, they don't receive the downtime that's necessary in a 24-hour shift to recoup from previous calls. But it also impacts our training. Constantly, units are on the road, so it's difficult for officers to schedule training when you're constantly running. In the past, 10 or 12 calls a day was a busy day. And now that's kind of a slow day for us. There's numerous times that they experience 18 to 20 calls in a 24-hour shift. With all of the cleanup afterwards, reporting, it takes a tremendous amount of time for the employees and the downtime is really shrinking each year. So as you can see, quite a significant increase from last year. We've looked at, tried, over the years, we've tried to trend what's causing that. Is there certain days of the week, is there peak time, so we could address that? And it's really not, it's, there's no one or two factors that indicate why we continue to see the increase in the number of incidents. So as Mr. Trivett mentioned, we've looked at, one of the things we looked at is our arrival time to patient. So you see in that bar graph, the first 2.23 of the total calls that were looked at, the average arrival time to patient after arrival on scene is 2.23 minutes. If it's over 2.3, the average is 4.01. And our overall time is 8.58 average from PSAP to patient. That was a little bit, and one of the other slides shows it even breaks it down for certain areas of the city. But most of the time, we talk about, response time is, it's all in the perspective of the individual that called. If you're calling from a private residence, when we drive up front, you're relieved, the EMS unit's there, the fire unit's there, and the clock stops. Whereas Mr. Trivett mentioned, it may be a hotel, it may be a dorm, where once you get out of the unit, there's still some travel time to get to the patient. So this breaks it down by our zones in the city, and this is not all the calls. We just took, I think it was about six months' worth of calls when the consultant asked for the data. So you could, as you look at that, you can see that is from the time PSAP received the call until the time that we mark with patient. So those times were, it was a little surprising to me. It makes sense, but it was surprising to me. And not many localities look at that time from PSAP to patient. A lot of times, that time stops when they arrive on scene.
So one of the obvious questions is, what's the standard for operating a fire department? And there really isn't one. The closest thing that we have are the recommendations of the National Fire Protection Association. And the one that applies to our fire department is 1710, which is for career departments. So what they recommend is that within 60 seconds, you should be performing from alarm to turnout in 60 seconds. You need to have the first company on scene within four minutes. And 90% of the fire calls should be responded to within eight minutes from the full first alarm assignment. And then at the bottom there are our percentage of performance. And it's interesting, 37% of our calls are responded to in less than 2.5 minutes, and 63% are over. So we're beating the standard in most regards. It is important to point out that NFPA also deals with staffing. And we are not staffed appropriately if you consider that recommendation. So this is a map from the consultant's study. And you'll be able to tell the difference between their maps and our maps because their maps use this purple color. So the light purple that kind of surrounds the station there is the eight-minute response time. And the dark purple is the four-minute response window.
One thing to point out as we go through the maps is this is specifically just driving time. There's no traffic impact. So it's just considered driving time from point A to point B.
Right. So if you look at this map, this is one of our maps that our GIS professional did. And what it shows are the must-have eight-minute window and the nice-to-have four-minute window. And what our percentages are, given that drive time from the existing station. So we're reaching 93% or can reach 93% of the city's addresses in that eight-minute window. And we are reaching 31% in the four-minute window. So if you think back to that Pecosin slide, our single-station is outperforming that two-station model. Of course, the demographics are different, the traffic is different. And again, this is only showing straight drive time.
Not time to patient. This is...
Right. This is from, call comes to the station and we respond. So the consultant looked at a bunch of different options and tried to identify the best possible ways to improve that response time. And so as you see here, the red dots represent the seven different locations throughout the city that they considered for a new station. We're gonna not walk you through all seven, because that would take considerable effort and time. But we wanted to show you some of the more critical ones, especially the ones that we've talked the most about. So this slide shows you one that we dealt with quite a bit over the last few years. And that is a scenario where we stay with a single-station model, a centralized station. But because of concerns of displacement of the operation while we're doing construction on our existing station, what if we moved it just slightly down Lafayette Street? And what you can see here from the map is, the one on the right shows you that expanded footprint of the four-minute and eight-minute response time. I've highlighted in green there an area of gain, but there are also areas of loss by that small shift. And what's interesting that needs to be pointed out by this map is just moving that station, that very small amount, really impacts that overall response pattern in the city. And as we move through the rest of these maps, it's important to keep in mind that dark boundary that's hashed that runs around, that's actually the city limits. And so when you think about moving stations further up the Richmond Road, if you think about this shape, as the chief pointed out in our briefings, it's a turkey. If you move up that turkey's neck, then your response time is actually growing, your benefits from that are actually growing in the county and you're losing a lot of benefit inside the city limits. So what are the other options that we could consider for improving response time? And the obvious choice is moving away from a centralized station and going to a two-station model. And the consultant here has recommended, this was actually their recommendation in the end, was to go to a two-station model that's served on kind of a west-end and an east-end part of the city. The two locations that they liked the best were a location on Monachelo. No specific sites were identified. This was just looking at areas and leaving it up to us to find a piece of property that would be suitable. And then another location on Penniman Road. So, you know, no consideration for cost of acquiring the property or any of those kinds of issues. So what we did was we took that recommendation and expanded it to consider cost of acquisition and identified that a good option to consider would be if we utilized existing city assets to accomplish the two-station model. And so we looked at placing a site on the Richmond Road property that we own and then another site on Capital Landing Road. And we're gonna talk about that in greater detail. Recognizing, as the chief said, that it's unlikely that we would choose to build two brand-new stations simultaneously and close the central station, we wanted to look at the more likely scenario of, at least in an interim period, this community would be serviced by both the central station and a second station location, building toward accomplishing that two-station model. And so we evaluated the two locations that we identified that were city-owned. The first one that we're showing here is Capital Landing Road. And as you can see, the same response mapping is shown. You've got a dark-hatched area that represents, in red, that represents the expanded four-minute response time for Capital Landing Road. And the lighter-red hatched area is the expanded eight-minute response time, overlaid with the existing station's response times that are shown in blue and green. And what you can see there on the right are the expanded areas of service based on the number of addresses that would be served in that scenario. So in the eight-minute response times, we gain about 0.27%. And in the four-minute response time, 18.52%. So the greater gain is in the nice-to-have and not so much in the must-have numbers. This is the same mapping shown for Richmond Road, the Richmond Road site. And as you can see there, it's a little more balanced in its gains. The 6.54% gain in addresses for the eight-minute response time and 9.42% response time gained in the four-minute category. This was a little bit of a surprise to chief and I. When we started our conversations together about two years ago, I think we both acknowledged that if we were adding a second station, we thought it would be on the eastern end of the city. Either the chief thought in the Capital Landing Road area, and I thought more toward Riverside because of the area of growth that that represents. But when you really start looking at response time and the overall benefit to the community, the numbers and the growth that's expected really support a Richmond Road location. So where are those growth areas? As I said, if you look at it from what we know, we know that we have units awarded in the Riverside development, Quarter Path to Riverside. And we have density awarded at Midtown and new apartments being constructed right now at High Street. Given the state of Virginia's regulations on expansion inside cities, it's easy to forecast where the growth's gonna be. And at least for the foreseeable future, when we talk about residential, these three locations are where it's gonna happen. Again, what's interesting about this map is it supports the idea of looking at that Richmond Road corridor for a second station, if that's the option you were going to choose. So this is the map that, these next two maps sort of show the story of the two-station response and what's gained and what's lost. So this is the four-minute response if we did transition fully into the two-station model that we showed, a Richmond Road site and a Capital Landing Road site. And what you can see there is our actual gain in a four-minute response in terms of the number of addresses in the city is 20%. And that's a healthy improvement. But where we lose are those pink-shaded areas right in the core of the city. And so that reflects the loss of that central station. So the areas that are impacted the most are the core of the campus and the historic district. Now, it's important to point out that this is the four-minute response time. So we don't lose those areas from the eight-minute response time. And then this map shows the eight-minute response gains and losses. And in this one, the scenario is not as great. The actual gain from that two-station solution is less than 1% in terms of the number of addresses. And the big reason for that is, this goes back to the difficulty of siding a second station, is the further you move a station toward the edge of the city, because of the shape of our city, the more the benefit is lost or leached out into the county and less so in the city. So again, these are addresses only within the city's boundaries. So now I want to talk a little bit about funding before we get to a recommendation. And so this chart shows you an excerpt right out of the city's capital improvement plan. It's not so much important... It's not so much important to get hung up on the dates or the amounts prescribed to each category because, as I said, we have this total amount of money available for this project. And as we move into true design, a lot of these numbers will be moved around to accomplish the plan. But as you can see here, we're showing about $11 million dedicated to the fire station renovation and in the neighborhood of three and a half available for the police station So in a scenario where the option that city council chooses is more expensive than the money that we have available, because as I said before, we have not bid these projects, so our estimates are purely estimates. They could easily be too low or too high. I wanted to give you some ideas of kind of where we would be looking. So the first one is, how did we end the fiscal year and what was our surplus? So if you look at where we ended FY '18, we finished with $1.6 million, which was a great ending to the year, certainly better than Ms. Dameron and I had expected. But our performance is the critical piece of this analysis. We finished the year on the whole good, but our operating surplus was only $600,000, which was substantially less than it normally is. And what that is indicating is the trend that we've been observing of revenues and expenses sort of meeting together in that fiscal year trend is becoming more and more pronounced. So our ability to accomplish projects that involve recurring expense every year is getting more and more challenged. So as we look at what this data really means, if you think about how the city has organized its financial plan, the surplus right now rolls over to the CIP and helps fund that versus the only thing that's available to help our operating lines is our traditional revenues. So while we've got some areas for growth in the capital improvement plan, adding new recurring expenses is something that we need to think about very carefully. And then the last item there is looking at debt. So obviously, the city has a very low debt profile for a city our size and with our revenue streams. But I don't mean to indicate that we should run out and borrow more money. I just want to show you that if that were something you were interested in, we certainly have that capability without it being extremely taxing. What I've shown you there is the debt profile map that was given to us by Davenport and Company when we did the bonding for this project. And as you can see there, the dark green represents the old debt and the light green represents the new debt that was taken on. And so in the short term, we increased our overall expense annually by about 400, I'm having trouble seeing it, $489,000 a year. That will decrease down to $299,000 in FY '21 as some of that debt is extinguished. So now the staff recommendation. So if you consider what we've shown you today, I think what we have done is, through this process, is we've made an excellent case for the fire department needs more staffing. As we presented this to the three shifts at the fire department, it was very clear that paramount amongst their concerns was the fact that they don't have the downtime that they need to fulfill, fully rested or to invest in training and other activities at the department. And so that is directly a component of how many calls they're running out of the single station. And what it indicates to me is that we need to add staff to lessen that burden. The other thing that we need to do is make sure that we have a station that allows for segmented response so that these shifts can be divided up to respond only when their area is called. So our staff recommendation sort of reflects that. It's a hybrid really of the options that we presented to you. It is to renovate the existing station while we continue investigating and planning for that second station design as build-out occurs. The advantages of that are that we get to take the time to really consider growth patterns as we've shown in the map to make sure that those materialize and identify what the demand is on our actual response time. And also, over time, build the staff into the existing station that would be needed to staff that second station so that it's not so much of a hardship all at one time as we open a second station adding $300,000 to $400,000 worth of staffing costs. All of that is conditioned upon us being able to find a design solution that allows for station one to operate without being interrupted during construction. And so we've been very careful to try and find that solution. This shows you the design that we currently like the best for that scenario that we've recommended. The first picture is the existing station, 12,215 square feet. And then the other two pictures show you how we would like to move ahead. So we would be increasing the overall fire department dedicated square footage to 32,400 and that adds 20,185 square feet to the overall plan. The way that we do this is kind of the key component and a lot of credit goes to currency tingle for bringing us an option that really accomplished what we were after. If you look at this, it's sort of a hopscotch approach to getting the project done so that we can accomplish it without inconveniencing the staff to any great degree onsite. So the first step is to relocate the fire administration from the existing fire station to the third floor of the municipal building, which is currently underutilized. We have a considerable amount of space up there that could be dedicated to its purpose. It also includes turning the old city council chambers that were used up there into the EOC, which, as Mark was saying before we started the meeting, is an important component of what we're planning to do because much of the EOC, if not all of it, is analog and needs to be converted to digital. So there's a considerable expense there no matter how we proceed. What that does is it frees up the existing space that's dedicated onsite to fire station administration so that we can construct a new dormitory building. And the plan shows a two-story facility there to accommodate all of the staffing needs that we can envision. It's a couple of advantages of that is it gives us a real hard distinction between what might be considered public space in the fire station from private space because obviously the fire station currently includes kind of a dining area and a kitchen as well as a gym. If we were able to distinguish that better, then we might be able to expand the use of those facilities to include more than just the fire station needs. You know, if there's a special event or something where we wanted to have an employee luncheon, that would be a good spot to do it. And certainly being able to offer the benefit to the rest of the city employees of using a state-of-the-art gym facility would be a good one. It also adds some bay space while allowing us to expand the existing bay widths and increase the height. And in the back there, adding some coverage storage and additional parking. It also allows us to reconfigure the existing parking lot that would, at least in this diagram, shows closing the Lafayette Street entrance and opening a new entrance that comes in off of Boundary Street. The advantage to that is that a lot of the staff have complained about the difficulties of turning in and out on Lafayette Street because of its proximity to that intersection. And again, these are civilian vehicles turning, not big trucks with flashing lights. So that is definitely a benefit to the overall station operation. And with that, we'll ask, answer any questions. You know, I did want to point out that the decision process of one station or two stations is extremely difficult to come to a conclusion on because there are clear pros and cons to both. I think that what we've tried to do here is to consider the financial pressures that are currently facing the city as well as the future needs of the department. But I think that a two-station solution is just as good an option if that's where we wanted to proceed. The real difference between the two is when we have to add that new staffing and building costs, how quickly that happens. You know, in our plan, as you can see, the reason I call it a hybrid is because we're acknowledging that we can certainly improve response times, although not as great as we would have thought before we ran the numbers, by adding a second station, that that's where we should be looking at for future needs. But giving us the time to better plan for it is probably wise and prudent.
Is that all?
Unless you'd like me to add to it.
Where to start? Well, I certainly appreciate all the effort staff went in to putting the presentation together and the thought that you all put into this and working with the department and talking to all the staff there and getting input. I think that's important. I guess the question for me in terms of one station, two station, you know, two things that really stand out in my mind as questions that I have heard from folks is, one, the location on Lafayette Street and its proximity to railroad tracks and the danger that may be had because of that. Knock on wood, we haven't had anything that, you know, a train incident that precluded us from using the station. And then the second thing, again, related to the railroad, is having a station on the other side and how that might affect. Can you just talk a little bit about the effects of the trains and the railroad tracks and having a station on the other side of the railroad?
Certainly. So obviously, the, any time that dangerous products are moving up and down the rail line, it's a consideration. As you stated, fortunately, we haven't had an incident that impacted the fire station being in that close proximity. It would really be, as we looked at these response models and response time models, it would really be difficult to locate a station far enough away from the tracks in a safe zone that would gain us, that would be that big of advantage for the response times that we're looking for. It would, as Mr. Trivett pointed out, it would probably improve our response times to the counties one way or the other. But to get the distance that we would need away from those railroad tracks would not be conducive to what we were looking to accomplish with two stations with response times.
Because I, a couple of locations we talked about, the Richmond Road site, which was the Super 8 site, isn't that much further away from the railroad tracks. And then Penniman Road, of course, is right there on the railroad tracks as well. So Capital Landing Road would be a little bit different. In terms of staffing and the whole downtime, as you look at the one-station proposal that you presented, you would have more space for additional staff so that they could, I guess, take turns and going on calls and that would be the plan?
Well, in newer designs, they isolate the alerting systems. So for instance, if a crew was assigned to Medic 10 and it was just Medic 10 that was being requested, that portion where they're sleeping would be the only portion alerted. Whereas now, the whole station's alerted for any individual call, which wakes everyone up.
That's all the questions I have. I guess I want to hear from the rest of council and then I may have another question and some comments. Thank you.
Appreciate you, Mr. Fire Chief and Mr. City Manager, for your very lengthy and productive presentation. Certainly the most difficult decision we'll have to make, and I'm curious to see what other folks will have to say on this dius, but kind of have some questions to begin with in terms of the data, some of the benchmarking. And I know it's a lot of it from consultants. I just need to make sure that I understand this in terms of the unique picture of Williamsburg. You know, for example, we had that slide where we had all those comparison localities. And Mr. Maslin and I had that discussion, to his point, to his credit, he had brought it up. There's not really much similarities, particularly with Pecoson. With regard to population side, yes, there are similarities, but, you know, does the data that the consultants have gathered account for the college, Williamsburg, besides just the build-out with the Riverside potential, Midtown Row and potentially Capital Landing Road?
No, and actually, it didn't. It was just data that the consultant provided on the research that he did. But one thing that we told the three shifts in the fire department as we made this presentation is I think all of us acknowledge that the number of responses is not comparable to any other locality, without even calling them. I could, I could go out on a limb and say that our responses are far greater than any locality that was included in that table. I think that table was specifically just looking at square miles and how many fire stations they have and not, as Mr. Trivett pointed out early on and the shifts pointed out, the one thing that was missing was the number of responses. And I think we all acknowledge that those response numbers are critical and that ours far exceed those other localities.
Right. In terms of the second fire station idea, I'm sorry, my thoughts are a little bit scattered because there's just a lot of information out there. So I might be jumping from point to point. But in terms of the second fire station, from what I've gathered from input, there's this idea of redundancy, that it's a positive aspect to have for fire departments. Can you kind of expand on that concept and why potentially that might be more necessary? I know there's some, I'm leaving out the affordability aspect of it right now, the cost and all that. That's another reality we have to deal with concurrently. But I'm just curious in terms of what makes this concept, what might push this concept to the edge that we might not consider compromising with just an expanded one-station idea and really embrace the two-station model?
So as you're all well aware, we had an issue where we didn't have redundancy with the lightning strike that impacted the current fire station. And our staff stayed in trailers on the back ramp. Fortunately, the apparatus floor wasn't affected, so the apparatus was able to stay inside. But there's a lot of other things right now that are impacting. There's another locality right now that has had a fire station closed for three months due to a bedbug infestation. And they've had to relocate people to another station trying to get that under control. There's, because our providers are exposed to all types of illnesses, it could be a catastrophic illness that impacts the station. So if you have everybody in one station, everybody's exposed to that. So there is some value in redundancy. So if something does happen, that, you know, you have that redundancy. As Councilman Pons pointed out, you know, there's a lot of things that could impede, if you had one station, there's a lot of things that could impede you from traveling to one area of the city. Whereas if you had a station at another location, that gives you an alternative to travel to that impacted area.
So you're just, are you meaning to say that with the redundancy aspect, it's mostly playing for worst-case scenarios rather than being able to, let's say, provide staffing at a certain location to be able to have a better response?
Yeah, I would say that's a worst-case scenario. Again, in my 38 years, I've never experienced the fire station being struck by lightning and causing the fire station to be closed for a period of time. So, and I think if you surveyed, there's not, that probably hasn't happened very often across the country, but there is, there is some value in redundancy.
Okay. I'm going to think of more questions. I'll get back to you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you both for the presentation. So my questions will be a little bouncing around also. So one thing, I think, from looking at a second station down the road, if we did that, it would allow for that growth trends to sort of build out. I mean, we can predict where we see the growth coming in High Street and Quarter Path, but we don't know exactly how much is going to be occupied in there. So we would have a little bit of time to prepare for that if we did that. And so when you say too that, you know, the alert system is in the building, so there's really no quiet time for anyone with the number of calls that we have per day, anyone who's on duty is going to be woken up like every...
Correct.
...minutes or so.
Correct. Our system now is not designed that way. It alerts the entire station. It's not isolated to certain areas of the station. So one call comes in, whether you're on that assignment or not, everybody, and it's extremely loud, as you could imagine.
So the renovation would allow for that. And then was mutual aid taken into account in any of these drawings or response times?
No, we wanted to stick solely to the city. And that's why it listed city addresses and we didn't take into consideration any mutual aid responses.
And then the last thing, as far as separating the admin staff and the EOC from the rest of the fire department, is this something that's considered best practice or done in other municipalities, even if they might have one fire station?
So it varies with the current, if the direction that council provides is to, as recommended, to renovate the current station and make that plan to build a second station, then I have, I don't see an issue with fire administration being separated from two stations. Obviously, from a convenience standpoint for management of the station day-to-day, the way it's set up right now, it's convenient. But if we're truly planning for that two-station model down the road, then having fire admin in a separate location doesn't have a negative impact on the department.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Couple of questions. We talked about the benchmarking that was in the consultant's report maybe being less than valuable the way it was presented. But let's take a look at James City County call volume. So they have five stations. What would, and our call volume is what, 4,600 per year?
4,605 for 2018.
Out of one station. So what do we think their average call volume is per station?
I think they're around, if I recall from, I obviously haven't seen their 2018 numbers, but I think from 2017, they were about 2,000 calls a station, give or take. They have some stations that are a little busier and some that are a little slower.
And so headquarters station, Station 3, might have more?
Correct.
Right. Okay. Can we go to slide 14, the response growth? Can we go to Slide 14, the response growth?
Eventually.
It's a lot easier to do on the iPad.
There you go. So, I think what would be helpful, especially when we go into the budget retreat, if we could add to this chart the shift staffing per year and see how that's related to the call volume.
That's a good suggestion.
And then, after you get through that, if we go to the next-to-last slide, page 32, the preferred design. A couple of questions there. There we go. So, if we were to build Station 2 first, roughly, what percentage of this construction would we not have to do?
I don't know the percentage, but there's obviously some renovations that would need to take place. Roof, we constantly have roof issues and plumbing issues that would need to be addressed if we were going to be there any length of time. I don't know the exact percentage, but it would be, I think, if I recall correctly, Mr. Trivett, there was maybe a $2 million price tag put on the renovations.
Yeah, Mr. Cronin is here. He might be able to answer a little bit better, but just some things that we know we would need to do is, the needs assessment looked a lot at hot and cold zones. That would still be a factor in the current design. So, you've got gym and classroom that would need to be relocated to try and deal with that if you wanted to tackle that. The kitchen, there's substantial improvements needed, and the equipment there, including the hood.
Sleeping areas.
Sleeping areas need to be reconfigured. As I just said, the EOC needs to be redone to stay current with technology, and the size really is too small if we had a full activation. So, it's a fairly comprehensive remodel, even in that scenario.
So, and the age of the fire administration, EOC building that we would be tearing down under this plan is, what, 10 years?
We moved in in the summer of '09.
If we could look at the existing bays, so, if I recall, and we're talking about drive-through bays, we have six existing bays. If we look at Engine 3 being maybe half a bay, because we've got apparatus there, and then, under the proposed design, it looks like we're really only gaining half a bay, because we know that the Engine 3 bay, half a bay goes away, and we're really ending up with, is it seven bays in the new design?
Correct. And one of the things that's hindrance to us now is the current width and height of our current bays. And as we visited, the team that I put together from the fire department, not only, we attended the fire station design conference in Raleigh, but we also visited, along with Guernsey Tingle, a newer station in Danville, Virginia, and the space on the apparatus floor is key. In fact, we're very fortunate that we haven't had more injuries because of the narrow space in between our apparatus. When the doors are open, they almost touch each other. So, you can imagine, as people are trying to get dressed out to go on a call, we're very fortunate that we don't have more injuries with the smaller. So, the reason we lose, from an engineering standpoint, we could take out the columns on the existing bays and make them wider, and there's also the capability to heighten the doors as well. So, that's why we lose some base space in a renovation.
And I think the original consultant's report recommended that we have eight bays.
Correct.
So, that's all I have. Thank you. Just to follow up on space, the covered space that you would build out back, would that be for some of the equipment that's inside the station today, the boat and some other?
Gators, EMS gators, those kind of things.
Not only covered, but besides and doors?
I'm not sure if it had doors as well, yes.
I'm sure everybody will. So, we've talked about two different possible ways to renovate the current central station. One is the, for lack of a better term, the major overhaul, and the other is the minor overhaul. The major overhaul takes it from 12,000 square feet to an effective 32,000 square feet because we're moving some of the uses to other space in the municipal building.
Correct.
If we do the minor overhaul, what's the increase in effective space at the current location? Zero. I mean, are you saying zero, you don't know?
Yeah, no, I believe there's no additional space added in the, that's just to maintain the building in its current configuration and make it more livable, but it's not from a mechanical standpoint, but not from adding any additional space.
And would the minor overhaul achieve the wider bays that would create better safety conditions for the fire?
No, sir.
Would it create the hot and cold zones?
No, sir.
Space, not the EOC, the EOC would move into the third-floor conference room. The space that would be used for fire admin is the expansion space that was built into the addition onto the municipal building that's currently not really fitted out?
It would actually be
A little over half of that, is that correct?
Right. It would actually be two spaces combined. If you look at the slide here, there's an orange space, and that's currently where we do some public work storage, surplus property and that kind of thing. And then, adjacent to that is a space that's currently dedicated to municipal employee gym-type exercises.
That shows up here as white space on this.
Right. And so, what we'd be looking at is dedicating an entire space.
Okay, not just the part that's colored.
Right, not just the colored part, but the whole.
So, it would be the whole?
Yes.
And that whole empty space there was designed at some point for additional needs that the community would have, whatever they might be. One thing, some of this is, it's a little hard to follow, and I know you, and I don't mean your presentation, the presentation was great. The consultant information is a little hard to follow, because at one point, they, I don't even know what the slide number, it doesn't matter, where they gave the little scorecard, they gave points to the two-station model because you could use existing land at no cost. And so, there was a cost savings there, except that that land has a cost, because that land had to be bought or can't be sold for another purpose. So, there is really a cost. But then, later on, they don't recommend using those two spaces, even though they scored them for having no cost, they recommend other locations. And I have a hard time reconciling that. What does strike me, though, is that there's huge value in the central location that we currently have because of what it does for overall response times and its proximity to, I mean, I'm just guessing, it seems like the vast majority of our calls are right in this core area of the city between, I mean, College and Colonial Williamsburg, do they generate more than 20%, 25%?
I don't know the percentage right off the top of my head, but we did have, in one thing that the consultant didn't provide in our mapping that was very clear as well, was we provided him five years' worth of response data so we could plot those calls on the map. So, it's pretty equal, based on what I recall from what information he did give us, that it's pretty well distributed throughout the city.
So, you don't see a core emphasis on call volume?
Correct.
Okay. What's, so, we have two issues, we have three issues here. We've got the police station, which we're not talking about now. We've got the, whatever we're going to do with the fire facility issue, and then we've got the staffing issue. Is that correct? Which of the, leave the police out of it for now, I won't ask you about them, but on the fire side, which is the more critical for your successful, safe, healthy operations? Additional facilities right now, which can't happen because it takes years to make this possible, or additional staffing?
So, that's a question that, where we ended up in this middle-of-the-road recommendation is, obviously, if I, if it was endless, I would want both. But increasing our staffing is paramount. And the reason I presented last year at the budget retreat, and again, you gave us the additional folks' FTEs last year, what we could afford in the operational budget. So, increasing our staffing as we work towards a second station, the staffing is paramount to try to take some of the stress off of our current staff. And it also becomes, it also becomes a retention issue for us. People are going to leave this department to go to another locality and be assigned to one station that's only running 2,000 calls as opposed to running 4,600 calls. So, I see that as a retention issue for us as well. And in today's environment, not just in Williamsburg, but in all the localities, we're not seeing the number of applicants for the fire service that we once did. So, it's really, it's really important that we do everything we can to try to maintain those employees long-term.
And the desired increase in staffing is four positions?
Four positions, yes, sir, and three additional lieutenant promotions.
But those are current positions that would be
Current positions that would be, yes, sir.
Move to a supervisory role.
Yes, sir.
Question relative to staffing?
Sure, I didn't get the next one out, so you jump right in.
But in terms of staffing, you can't do that right away, or can you? Do you have the space to house any new staff in this building?
So, we've, in the last year or so, we've taken another office and converted to another bedroom facility because we didn't have the capacity for our current staffing. So, yes, it's going to be, it's going to be an issue as we hire additional staffing to accommodate them in the current facility.
Could we move some of the administration, I know, if we move administration into the municipal building, there's renovation that has to go on, but is there some that could move sooner rather than later to free up more space for additional staff in the station?
I don't think there's, I think it would have to be all or, all or nothing for the administrative staff to move.
I'll take a break.
Okay. So, could we clarify in terms of the color of money, in terms of the source, because I don't think this is an either-or, a question, because we've actually demonstrated that we have the money for capital improvements, and staffing is coming out, would come out of the general fund. So, I'm a little confused about that question.
I don't understand the question.
Yeah, why would we say?
Don't understand my question.
Yeah, why would we say, should we do staffing, increase staffing, or do facilities improvements?
No, I didn't, that was not my question. I said, which is the higher priority?
So, but
Is the most important thing right now? If you, if you need something to improve the service capability in this community, is it more important right now to get additional brick-and-mortar facilities, or is it more important to get more people in positions? The reason I ask that question is because if it's more important to have additional firefighters, and we need to figure out on the operational side how we make that possible, because we can talk about four minutes and we can talk about eight minutes, but when it's your mother, or your child, or somebody laying on that kitchen floor who needs help right now, you don't care. You want those people there.
So, I would phrase it, it's just as important rather than more important.
Well, you can answer the question for him if you'd like. I thought I'd ask the chief.
But it's just important to get
So, are you saying it's just as important to have the fire station as it is to have additional people, as a priority?
As a priority, as, and all of y'all know from the beginning, Mr. Trivett knows from the beginning, I've been a proponent for a second fire station. But right now, the priority is staffing as we build towards, as our recommendation says, as we plan towards that second fire station. We, again, perfect world, we build a second fire station and get the staffing, but I'm also
And we're not saying that can't happen.
Right.
But if we can make staffing happen sooner, we will have to make some decisions, and they won't be easy decisions, but if we can make the decision, we can get staff in place a lot sooner than we can build or renovate a fire station. All it takes is money, right? But we can make that happen. We just have to make the tough decisions that make it possible. So, I think that's the message that we need to be thinking about at our upcoming budget retreat, is when can we make that happen, and when does it make sense to make it happen, given whatever constraints you have with the current facilities and the layout and number of people you can accommodate? Then that leads us to the additional question of the fire station. Nobody here doesn't think that we don't need, that's a lot of negatives in there, we all think that we need additional fire facilities. The question then comes down to, are we better off with this major renovation of the central station and some future construction of a second station, or do we look at building a remote station sooner and then working in the, a small renovation of the bigger station at some point down the road?
That's right.
Of those two options, I tend to be a proponent of the first, which I think is what staff has recommended, but as long as we can also look at ways to get those extra firefighters and EMS into the pipeline.
And I think I'm probably at the same place. You know, when you look at different locations, you know, right here on Lafayette Street, where it currently is versus further up on Richmond Road, you know, the results in terms of response times are negligible, and it just kind of seems odd that it would make that much difference going that far west. Then, you know, I don't think we've really pinpointed where we would want a second station yet, and I think there's some growth in the community that still needs to be had in order for us to make that sound decision, because like the mayor just said, and I think the chief said, most of us feel that a second station is needed, but when? And so
Well, and the other question, if I can stand on to that, we can talk about location, but if there's not a parcel there to be had, we can't put something there.
That's right.
It's going to take more time to do.
No, and I think also people identify with a downtown station, too.
So, I think, you know, in either case, I think renovating this station right here is the best place for this station. Could it be further away from the tracks? I don't know where you would, where you would put it. And it seems like it has great accessibility from Lafayette Street to get to other parts of the city, about as good as you can here than anywhere else in the city. So, I guess I would lend to, lead to getting this one done, waiting a few years, or get this one done, just work on our staffing, and then find a second station site at the right time, at the right place.
And I think we can still be looking for that site now. It doesn't mean we have to find it tomorrow, but if, you know, we don't find it till we start looking for it.
So, in terms of, it's hard to really predict how much the call volumes would be shared if we had the second station, the remote station.
Correct.
Yeah, we couldn't say that the 4,000 would decrease to 2,000
Correct.
in the two locations, because we don't even know where the other potential area would be.
Probably won't be the same size.
But there's something to be said, though, about anticipation and the potential growth, particularly with some of the stuff that we had passed on this dais. And if I'm correct, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, the only fallback was not going with the remote location and also smaller constructions just because of the bigger costs, right? And we just cannot anticipate whether there's that growth?
No, actually, it would be cheaper to build the smaller station now, but
And also getting that remote location. I'm talking about the two simultaneous
Oh, no, no. If you did that, it
The cost would be much bigger.
Right. If you build both stations now and close the central station, that's a higher cost than renovating the existing station.
But keep in mind, if we build the second station and do the minor renovation, it's cheaper, but we get no additional space at the current central station.
And there's a big number there to be had in terms of renovation, still, I mean, so.
What do you think, Ted?
Did you want to have any comments?
No, I'm right now.
She'll wait after you.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. So, the city has identified the need for a second station for at least 10 years. In addition to improving response time, a second station provides logistical advantages for access throughout the city. Think of the gridlock experience during special events such as Grand Illumination or the potential traffic jam when 5,000 concert-goers try to leave Palace Farms event at the same time. Having a second station also offers redundancy capability for continuity of operations should Station 1 be incapacitated, as was witnessed a year and a half ago. Unfortunately, the presentation fails to connect the dots and convince us that continuing with one-station model will meet the needs of the firefighters and the community they serve. Furthermore, trying to tear apart and rebuild major sections of the facility on a piecemeal basis will challenge further the on-duty staff living conditions during their 24-hour shifts. Consider the effect on recruiting and retention for both career and volunteer staff. The consultant's study concluded with this statement, "We feel confident that Williamsburg will do well in the construction of a new fire station, of new fire station facilities, and we favor a two-station model." To that end, I propose that we focus on an evaluation of advantages and disadvantages of building Fire Station 2 now. Once activated, this additional capacity will reduce the renovations needed for Fire Station 1. There will be no need to divorce the Fire Department Command staff from Headquarters Station. There will be no need to waste money renovating attic space in the municipal building and tearing down the fire administration building, which is only 10 years old. that we focus on an evaluation of advantages and disadvantages of building Fire Station Two now. Once activated, this additional capacity will reduce the renovations needed for Fire Station One. There will be no need to divorce the Fire Department Command Staff from Headquarters Station. There will be no need to waste money renovating attic space in the municipal building, and tearing down the Fire Administration Building, which is only 10 years old. Also, we will save costs by not adding apparatus bays, only to gain additional space for one piece of equipment. With assistance from an inclusive group of stakeholders, I'm confident that we can develop a better comparison of the two alternate facility configuration options. Assuming consensus on a two-station solution after the analysis is presented, we can then evaluate location options for Station Two concurrently with development of the facility program. Thanks.
So, but you're suggesting that the second station would be Richmond Road or Capital Landing somewhere?
I'm suggesting we make a decision on one or two stations, and then we look at location.
Well, we can make a decision on two stations, and we can say, I think we've all said we eventually need two stations, so I-
Make a decision that we do the second station now.
Oh, okay, that's a different question.
Yeah, that's a timing question.
I don't agree.
I try, Mr. Maslin. I think, I think there's some value to having the second remote station to anticipate those growth patterns, because there's coming, and we've had, made numerous decisions zoning-wise and land use-wise, that I think it'd be reasonable that we can model out those growth patterns, even if we haven't felt the effect of it right now. I think the concerns and some of the issues that the Fire Department are there, that Mr. Maslin has echoed out, and I think we ought to plan for the future and not necessarily wait to be reactive. But, I'm, so in term, I'm confused. In terms of the timeline, we're gonna continue having these discussions into the budget retreat, right? What, what particular direction are you looking for today?
What we wanted to get today was the decision to move ahead with our recommendation, so that we could finalize a design to renovate this station and begin the RFP process. Because remember, we have money already committed.
Understood.
And, and the advantage that, that we see in doing our recommendation is it gives us more time to add the staff that's needed. So we would have those discussions during the budget retreat, but it wouldn't impact the plan to move ahead with renovation here.
Mr. Zhang, can you talk about housing that, that we've already zoned for and allowed for? Are you referring like to Quarter Path?
Yeah, Quarter Path, I think Riverside would be pretty reasonable, even though there's not really any activity within Capital Landing Road. With the hospitality, to anticipate a hospitality tourism zone that we have there, it wouldn't be unreasonable to have some predictions out there, a conservative estimate and a high, high bar estimate. I mean, we already do it for Complan and for GIOs.
And so I think you're-
I see more growth, though, coming the other way, out Richmond Road.
I'm sure. Those are just some examples. I'm not particularly saying that. Those are the two biggest ones.
Well, and I think that speaks to the challenge that, that I have in terms of identifying, or working to identify where that next station should be. Because I think intuitively, with all the, all the homes that are gonna be built at Quarter Path, you, you know, somewhere over there would be, you know, a, a good place for it. And I'm surprised that the consultant, you know, didn't, or even staff, proposed that something should be built over there. And I guess something like Capital Landing Road would, would handle that area, is that the-
Yes, sir. And we, we did have our GIS expert in-house look at the, the Riverside area, and it was a single-digit 3%, I believe was the number. Only a 3% area of the city could be reached in a four-minute response time, only because that, that puts us on the, the very outskirts of the boundaries of the city.
And so how confident would you be if, if we waited to start a discussion about a second station, that you could adequately predict the future in terms of where it needs to be?
Well, I think i- if, if we had, if we had our in-house GI, GIS analysts prior to hiring the consultant, I think we would have already had that figured out.
I mean-
Ted, Ted has a question.
Sorry. This discussion would be informed if we could comment. We've got speakers that are gonna talk on this topic.
Yeah, and I offered them the option to speak, so that they, we would have benefit of that before we did this.
But, but we've had the presentation now.
I mean, to, to, do you mind if I just ask?
No, go ahead.
To Mr. Ponce's point, I mean, I, I can't really particularly throw out any locations, because I'm not an expert in it. I was just wondering if that could be something that staff could start looking into. I think the idea, the, the whole discussion right now is about timing, right? Some are about, let's do it in a future phase. Ted and I agree that we should do it now. You know, at some point, the discussion and the conversation's gonna have to start anyway. So I, I, would, would it be too much to ask if, if we had started that conversation? The, the chief had pointed out that, you know, we both had that data, given the timing of what happened with the previous city manager and all that, you know, it's not as ideal as we would like, but it's a lot of catch-ups to do. But would that be unreasonable to ask, or?
If, if your question is, can we go ahead and start looking for where that second station would be, we've already done that.
And continue that conversation.
Absolutely. I mean, the, the mapping that CILA, our GIS professional, has done is outstanding.
Okay.
And, yes, I mean, we've already started the process of trying to identify where that site would be. I think that, you know, if you look at where we had modeled it, the, the Richmond Road location is the old Super 8 site, right?
Mm-hmm.
And the hesitancy to go ahead and say, we're gonna dedicate that site, build a, a smaller station there to service that area of the city, is the value of that property post-buildout?
Sure.
And so the advantage to waiting is it allows us to see if that matures or not.
And, and as I pointed out, we still own property right there on Ironbound Road, close to Richmond Road. And it's been a lot more than 10 years. It's been at least, I don't, how long it, you would, predates you, and we've had that property for a long time for a second fire station.
Correct. Yeah, I noticed, though, my first project was to tear the old fire station down that was on that site. But I did look it up today, because I couldn't remember off the top of my head, but it's, it's just, I believe it's in the neighborhood of 1.2 or 1.3 acres.
And what is this Super 8 site?
I can't remember, Mayor.
1.67, wow.
It's very small.
Other questions, Mr. Zhang? Comments?
So, I, I think, I, I still support staff's recommendation and appreciate all the conversation here, but I think, based on the comments of, of staff, including the chief, that we move forward renovating, doing the expansion of the existing station, while we also then look towards the future and see how things evolve in terms of, of growth in the city, then we can better isolate where the next station would be, is probably our best bet.
I echo Mr. Ponce. As far as staff recommendation?
Mr. Maslin, you've already made your point, right. Read your statement. So, I guess the one question I'm left with, and I don't, I mean, it's not like I am wedded to this idea that one station is better than two stations. I'm not saying that at all. I think that we need to improve the current fire station facility that we have. It's just a question of to what extent do we do that? Do we do the, the minor or the major? And then do we do the second station right away, or do we do it down the road? I can't really make a decision on doing the second station right away if I don't know where it's going. I, I think, I think, and maybe that was your point, Mr. Zhang, that if we had more information on where that would be, maybe that helps us make that decision.
Okay.
Because then, then we know, we have a little better idea of what it's going to cost. Because we don't know what the land acquisition-
Sure.
-amount is gonna be. Or we don't even know if there's land to acquire to do it, which is the other question. So that's all I have to say right now. Do you have anything else you want to add? So, I, I'll leave it to my colleagues. Would you like to hear from folks who have speaker's cards on this now, or do you want to just?
So, I, I'd look forward to hearing what they have to say. So, I think what staff is looking, we're not making a vote on this. I think we're just trying to build a consensus amongst councils to the direction, and so.
I, I'm fine.
Okay. And what I'm gonna do, if, if you all indulge me, is just call on the speaker's cards who want to speak specifically to the fire station, and we will still have open forum soon after this. But if I might start with Eric Stone. And when you come forward, if you could offer your name, address, and keep your remarks to five minutes or less, we'd very much appreciate that.
Oh, is that why that clock's here?
Welcome firefighter Stone.
Good evening. Eric Stone, 6244 Weathersfield Way in Williamsburg, and I am a proud retiree of the City of Williamsburg Fire Department. I think this is probably the best place that anybody ever could work or live. I appreciate you guys, Mr. Mayor, and everybody else giving me a chance to speak. I'm here to, to speak on supporting building a second fire station now and adding additional staffing now. I had the fortunate pleasure of working in that one single building over there for 36 years. I believe if, if you add your fire sta-, your second fire station now with the staff, the staff that's needed, you're not, obviously, you're not gonna have to have a large station over there at, at the present location. I think, somebody mentioned it earlier, I think you did, Mr. Mayor, you know, this second fire station been talking about for, for a long time, even, you know, at the other site up there. A couple of things that I want to mention, and I'm not quite sure how the whole eight-minute response came about, but I know from the years of me working for the City of Williamsburg Fire Department, our community has, has expected for us to have a minimum of a four-minute response time. And we've talked for a number of years, again, before a lot of you, even before Chief Dent, once we reach that threshold, then we're timed, it starts for us to looking at building a second fire station to reduce the response time. To do what, what staff recommendation is, yes, you're gonna get your additional staffing, which they definitely need, but you're still gonna be running 4,000 calls out of one station. That's not gonna change. Still gonna be running the same amount of calls. And that's why I'm recommending that we build a second station now, staff it. Yes, you don't know how many calls that's gonna reduce from that one fire station, but you're not gonna be running 4,000 calls out of that one fire station. And again, I appreciate you guys. You guys got a tough job. One thing that I will say about this council, they've always been very, very, very supportive of public safety, Parks and Recs, all the departments in the city. You guys got a tough job, and, and I really appreciate what you, what you do. I appreciate my time that I've spent in the City of Williamsburg. There's never been a single day that I woke up and said, I don't want to go to work today. But I truly, truly believe that that second fire station with the staffing should be done before anything's done with the main station. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next card we have is Troy Lapatina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Troy Lapatina. I'm the president of the Williamsburg Volunteer Fire Department. I live in the 2,600 block of Lake Powell Road in Williamsburg, Virginia. I'm here to speak today on behalf of, of this fire station project, and I too support a second fire station. I also support the manpower request that's going forward as well. We need it. The city fire department consists of about 40 uniformed people. Right now, the volunteers, about 25 to 30, we have influx. 265 years ago, the Williamsburg Volunteer Fire Department was founded, 1754. It's been in existence ever since. We've had five career fire chiefs since then. In the 1960s, Elliot Jane came in as a fire chief and created a, a tremendous career department with training, and we were the envy of the state and the nation at that time. The, the top training that was available was here in Williamsburg. The fire station has been, we've had a fire station on Duke of Gloucester Street. We've had a fire station on Ironbound Road. The fire station, the headquarters fire station, used to occupy the block over where Barrett Seafood is now. Decisions have had to be made throughout time to move the fire station from time to time to meet the needs of the community. We're at that crossroads again. A second fire station built now, while the second station remains where it is, the headquarters stations, would be a better, I believe, a better idea and a better solution, for a couple of reasons. If we segregate or divorce, as someone said, the fire administration from the station, we're a small department. Fire administration's a misnomer. That's not administrative jobs. Each one of those people, the EMS captain, the fire prevention captain, the deputy fire chief, the fire chief, all respond on calls. They don't just sit in offices doing paperwork. There's a co-, there's, there's a bit of, of back and forth that happens every day between the on-duty shift and the administrative staff and the volunteers. That segregation will disrupt that. Also, if we look at the budget, we're gonna take probably $2 million out of that budget to upgrade or improve the municipal building. We'll have to do a renovation on the third floor. The building doesn't have a generator, emergency generator for emergency power for an emergency operations center. All that'll have to be taken account, account for. If we build a second station now, we're gonna relieve a lot of pressure on that station right now. We won't need all the base space that we have right now like we do. It'll be moved over to the other station. The apparatus, some of that apparatus will move. Take $2 million and do a renovation, like someone suggested, the minor renovation. That building will last us five to 10 more years, so that we can include in the CIP for longer out to replace or totally rehab that building. Nobody's talked about the additional cost to refurbish that building while it's still occupied. Construction workers working around the staff that's there, all the things that have to be done. What's gonna happen when they get onto the apparatus floor to do that work? Where are we gonna put the trucks and the apparatus then? Outside? And then what? Do they stay outside in the rain, in the storms, in the snow, in the ice? We know it's gonna take 18 months to, two years to probably acquire property, figure out where that second station really needs to be, and then staff it like it will be. We know there's time there. We have time. But this station was designed, built, and located there 40, a little over 40 years ago. We're at that decision point now. The decision that's made today, or Thursday, or whenever it's made, it's gonna have to last us another 40 to 50 years. I think somebody said earlier that, when they, when there, when there was another reporter up here, it's easy to take for granted when you've been around for 50 years. Sometimes we do get taken for granted. I'm not here to say the sky's falling, because it's not. And I believe in my heart that each one of you care deeply about this community and about the citizens here, as all of us that work in that building every day do. We just need some help right now. We need to add that second station. We need that additional staffing, so that we can continue to pro- provide those emergency services to this community. I was a career firefighter here, loved it. The day I joined and the day I left, loved it. That's why I'm back as a volunteer, committing my time, my effort, and my talent to this community. So we ask you to also support what we need, and that's that second fire station and that manpower. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lapatina. Chuck White?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Thank you for affording me the opportunity to speak here today. I too am here to advocate for the immediate decision to move forward with a second fire station, and with the additional staffing that's required to, to meet the needs that, that Chief Dent has outlined. To me, when I went through this presentation online, I, I looked at a number of things that, that looked to me like the decision was a lot closer than I believe it truly is. And I'd like to point out a couple of the things that I found inconsistent here that might make it a little clearer on, on the decision front. Specifically, the question was raised when we, we looked at the various communities to which we were, we compared Williamsburg. There were a number of, of cities listed there with similar population, and we questioned what the run responses were. I looked up the run responses for those cities that had it published online. Colonial Heights is the only city in there that came anywhere near the, the numbers from Williamsburg. Colonial Heights ran, and this is, these are 2014 numbers, which is the last year the state currently has online published. Colonial Heights had 4,700 runs in a year. That's very comparable to the 4,600 that we're running right now. I'd like to point out that Colonial Heights is doing that out of two stations. The, the other cities, Radford, 715 runs. That's nowhere near the 4,700 that we're talking about. It is, it, to compare us there is, is almost ridiculous, despite the fact that our, our populations are very similar. Bristol, Virginia, 2,572 runs. Again, almost half of what we do. Manassas Park, 2,238 runs for a year. Again, nowhere near the ballpark that we are talking about here. When we compared ourselves to the City of Pecos- When we compared ourselves to the City of Pecosin, uh, Pecosin ran approximately one-third the number of runs that the City of Williamsburg is doing every year. They're doing that out of two stations. The City of Pecosin probably has different motivations for having two stations. City of Pecosin is very prone to tidal flooding. It's very probable that their city gets divided, literally, by water, and it's necessary for them to have two stations. That is not the situation with us. However, we do have other issues. The huge tourist population we have here, the, uh, the college being present here, provide us with different challenges than these other cities. And I submit that is more than likely the reason for a lot of the, uh, the disparity here in the decision-making matrix. Uh, there's been a lot of talk about response times, and, uh, we've, we've talked about the eight-minute window and the four-minute window. There appears to be some confusion about the definition of those according to NFPA seventeen-ten. Seventeen-ten talks about a four-minute response time as a minimum across the city for the first arriving piece of apparatus. The eight-minute window that they describe is for the full alarm assignment arrival, meaning that we have now assembled on scene a supervisor, we have assembled an engine, a ladder, an ambulance, all of the necessary people required to do that job, which incidentally, the City of Williamsburg cannot muster in its best day when everybody is working. The current staffing at the City of Williamsburg does not meet the level required by NFPA seventeen-ten for a single-family dwelling house fire, much less a large-scale event that happens at one of the shopping centers or in a dormitory. But a simple, single-family dwelling requires fifteen personnel on scene according to NFPA seventeen-ten. Williamsburg, if everybody is working, cannot do that today. We have to have mutual aid come in to fulfill that need. Therein, again, highlights the need for the additional staffing, which is very clearly, uh, evident here. The, uh, the city does a remarkable job of responding to these incidents, and when we talk about those four and eight-minute response times, we are more than likely, I think, analyzing the first arriving apparatus in getting in that, uh, in that window. So if that is indeed the case, we may be grossly misjudging our capabilities here, and we may be finding that the decision for a single station, a, a single station versus a two-station model or even a three-station model is much clearer. I, again, would urge you to please look at this a little bit closer and strongly consider putting together that fir- that second station immediately. Uh, Troy identified a number of challenges with the existing station, trying to remodel it in place. I agree, there are a number of challenges there, even significantly more than have been detailed here. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. White.
So, you know, cowing arguments, um, from, from members of the audience, and I appreciate the level of experience that they all have, and it means a lot to me, so, um, guess since we're still only thinking about things, I guess I'd like to take some more time, talk to, talk to some staff members, um, just kind of circle back and then formulate some thoughts.
Gather more data, have a more informed discussion.
Well, I think one thing to me is, like, how do you determine the location? I mean, we can look at from, from the different scenarios. I don't think we're ever gonna be at the optimum response time wherever we would put a, a station necessarily, and not knowing exactly where the, the growth is going to be. So to me is, if the, a second one is sort of the preferred and, and suggested to go first, where would it go?
Well, I think, uh, the study does help us a little bit in that regard. As, uh, Mr. Trivet has pointed out, we know where the growth is gonna happen, we can't say when it will happen where, but we, we know the two prime areas where it's gonna happen. The challenge is that you only get the best benefit if this station is in a very, i- i- if it's placed within a very small area, because the farther you go out Richmond Road, the less benefit it ends up providing for the city. And it's not that we don't want to help the county, but we are, if, if we're gonna go this route, the only way we really get the benefit in the city is if it's in a very specific area of that Richmond Road or Monticello Avenue intersection area. Is that...
That, that's what our data shows right now.
A, a pretty narrow window.
That's, that's where I think we would initially be looking is there.
So the problem then, and this is why I can't answer the second station question, because there's not a place for it there right now. So unless, and, and until we can find that location and have a sense of what that would cost, we don't, we can't really evaluate it in comparison to doing major renovation on the first station as opposed to doing the second station first and then doing the minor renovation on the first station, central station. So a piece of data I would want, or the information I would want to know is, if there's an interest in pursuing the second station first idea, where are we gonna put it?
Sure.
So, um, what we can do as a staff is we can take some time and try to better answer that question, um, which would involve us running various scenarios with our GIS person on how those response times benefited. It would be very similar to the maps we've already shown you, all right? Because some of the things that Mr. Maslin pointed out as benefits, we can't quantify. Um, you know, they're just impossible to quantify. The one thing that we can quantify as a benefit from a new station is improved response times, as Mr. White said. That, that's the reason you build a second station. A second building alone does nothing to offset the downtime that we're not experiencing right now. So that would be what we'd be looking at, is how we're gonna improve those response times. The site that we've shown you already on Richmond Road, the Super Eight site, um, there was, I think, a nine and an eight percent increase in the eight and the four-minute responses, um, and I think those are the numbers that we can sort of expect. So at some point, we're making the decision on what's, what level of gain is worth that investment. And that, that's an answer that I don't think I can give you, that's, I don't think that's an answer that Chief Dent can give you, that's a policy decision in the city council.
So you'll give, you'll give...
If that's, if that's what you'd like us to do, we can come back and, and show you some additional scenarios of that second station location. What I would like to do, though, is if that's what we're gonna do, I'd like to narrow the discussion down to at least eliminate one scenario, and that is building two stations even in close proximity to each other. When Mr. Maslin and I had our briefing earlier today, we talked about this, and I said, "If, if we're going to do a minor renovation and build a new station, how long does that center station continue to operate in the model?" And I think that's a critical question to determine whether or not this makes financial sense.
Well, it's, it seemed from the data that was presented in this location analysis that it didn't make sense to move this center station in the other direction because it doesn't gain us anything, and we, we lose as much as we gain.
I think that's accurate. So i- if the council is telling us to look for a second station to complement the existing station, we will certainly go back and, and look for those sites and bring back some...
But we're not saying that that's the route we're gonna go, we just need to know what would be involved so we can better evaluate the two possible alternatives.
So I think, yeah, yeah. In addition, I, I would like to know, have a little bit more conversation about the effect of separating out the admin, and I know we talked a little bit about it this morning. Um, I think Mr. LaPettina brought up a good point, uh, just the sheer number of call volumes coming out of that, that one unit and how that really affects staff and how much of a benefit would it be to, to reduce that down to something more manageable? I think that's leads to the argument of a, a second station, uh, location. And then one of the things that Mr. White pointed out, and I'm sure it's true, but, you know, the NSA, NSI, or NIS standards, NSA, um, about responding to a house fire. I mean, are we, are we that understaffed, and what does that really mean?
We can certainly look at that. I mean, I, what I would, what I can tell you is, in my experience, the places that I have worked, I can't think of any of them that had adequate staffing to meet the NFPA standard for staffing. Chief Dent may have better insight on that than I do, though, 'cause I've never been a career firefighter.
Yeah, and obviously, NFPA is a recommendation, and, um, there's, a- as you all know, there's, there's a host of recommendation policies that they make, and, um, it, it would be, there's no locality that can afford the cost to meet every NFPA recommendation across the board. So you try to select the ones that would most benefit the community and your department and implement those recommendations, um, within reason. Again, uh, there are, there are localities across the country, NFPA recommends you have four people on every engine, there are locate, localities across the country that do that.
So it sounds like what you'd like us to do is explore more fully the effect of separating admin out. Obviously, if you build a second station, you're separating admin from the second station anyway, so, um, where would it go? We need to have more data on that. And so that, what that's gonna look like is not a, I, I can't see a scenario where we come back and say, "We found the location, it's, it's the best possible spot." I see a scenario where we come back with a series of maps like we've already done and show you the benefits in terms of addresses gained and lost, sort of like we've already done. Um, and then you've asked us to look at NFPA staffing requirements and what that might look like. Do we need to do that, or how, what, what kind of data would you like to see on that?
I think maybe what I just need to do is have a conversation with Chief Dent and get a better understanding of that, his point just now. It's good.
Finding where the best locations are for response time doesn't necessarily mean that there's land available in the best areas for us to have a second station there.
So just off the top of my head, what I think we will do is, obviously, we will ask CELE to look at, well, we've already got the numbers for Super Eight, I think that's a good viable location, um, and then look at the property that may be on Ironbound, obviously, and then we can try and identify if there are good locations along Richmond Road corridor that are not too far to the west, that we lose the benefit, but still close enough in that we, we still are in that same area of gain, and we'll come back with ideally three, maybe four, if we're fortunate.
And, and if I could add, that's, that's why the location, some of the locations that the consultant looked at were not maybe the ideal situations, um, to get the most benefit, but to gain some benefit, but look at land ac- it didn't involve land acquisition because the city owned that property.
And we talked a lot about future growth, and I don't know if, uh, planning department can kind of map that out in terms of, you know, where, uh, where we already have houses slated to be built or approved to be built and, and how that plays out.
Right. We can, we can actually run a scenario with CELE that includes those build-out scenarios based on what's been approved.
Oh, that would be good.
We did do that in our analysis of a riverside location.
Okay, so we don't have a lot of direction here, but...
No, I've got good direction, absolutely, and it's been an excellent conversation. I certainly appreciate the retired firefighters' comments. Um, you know, I think Troy attending one of the sessions was extremely helpful, and, you know, again, I, I just want to say that while we have this recommendation, um, either option i- is a good viable solution. It really comes down to, as Mr. White so eloquently put it, um, are we investing in that response time? Do we think that increasing that four-minute response time is a benefit worthy of that type of investment now? I feel more comfortable with a two-station solution that involves the center station continuing to be a functioning part of that model, um, so I'm looking forward to coming back to you. I can't promise it'll be in February, but that's what our aim will be.
Okay, great. Thank you. Takes us to city council communications, Mr. Trivet. Uh, I, we talked earlier this week.
Yeah, so one of the questions the mayor had asked was, could we, could we provide a, an update on the progress at the intersection of Long Hill and Ironbound? And so I've asked Mr. Small to come and tell us the story.
Relax there, uh... Good evening. Given the late hour, I'm gonna keep this pretty short. Um, after confirming with the contractor, I was notified this morning they intend to demobilize from the Ironbound Long Hill project in about three weeks. At that time, our new right-turn lane onto Long Hill Road will be open, all curb and sidewalk installed, and the signal will be made fully operational, uh, which includes synchronization, uh, with the Richmond Road signal, uh, albeit it'll still be on the temporary poles at that time. Uh, the only work remaining will be the installation of the permanent signal poles, uh, surface paving, and the final striping. Uh, this work, um, that portion of the work will be accomplished once the temperatures outside are a little more favorable in March or April, and that'll probably take a couple of weeks at that time. We do appreciate the public's patience, particularly those folks that use that intersection routinely, uh, and I can, happy to answer any questions you might have.
So within three weeks, the signals will be functioning normally, and we won't have the issues with the flashing light and people not sure, you know, who's going or what, and the, the longer backups that we're getting there?
That's correct. I mean, previously, when we had the signals, uh, cycling through, we were cycling them pretty fast to prevent backups from Richmond Road. And the part of the reason for that is, is they're just set on a set-time signal, uh, because we didn't have the sensors in the road. Right now, the loops are about half-installed, those will be finished within the next three weeks and hooked up to the signal. So we'll be able to, and synchronize it with the signal at Richmond Road. So all that's supposed to happen in the next three weeks.
It just seems like it's been a long period of time with little to no progress being made.
It, it seems like that, because a lot of people don't understand the, the stuff that you can't see. Uh, one of the biggest issues that we've had out there and the biggest delay has been with the gas company. Uh, they had to relocate, there was a, a gas regulator station kind of hidden underground in the sidewalk, uh, adjacent to the CVS up near Richmond Road. In order to add the new turn lane and to extend our storm drain across Ironbound Road, we had to relocate that station. Uh, and it's a long, drawn-out story as to the delays, uh, that that has caused to the project. And so it's really pushed us into this colder weather where we did not really want to be during construction.
So right now, there's, uh, out there in about a week, the right-turn lane onto Long Hill is crush and run. Will there be asphalt there?
That's right. They actually finished pouring up the curb, uh, today, and, uh, that should, you know, it'll cure and they'll strip the forms, and then all we've got left to do is, uh, clean it up a little more and put the base, uh, asphalt down.
Do the base sap...
But because of the weather and the wetness, you know, it's, that stone's not getting as, um, firm as we'd like it before we put asphalt on it. It takes a lot longer, given the weather and the colder temperatures.
Two questions, uh, you know, one of the issues that the staff's looking at is pedestrian safety citywide. Will these have pedestrian signals for crossing?
Yes. Well, that pedestrian signals at, at, and we've actually already relocated one of the pedestrian signals at Richmond Road to accommodate the turn lane, and this new signal will have pedestrian signals at all four corners.
A second question is, uh, and we know that you've impacted Parks and Rec in terms of the parking area for staging, right? Are we, are we open yet in terms of a lot of the parking area?
Kuanis.
Yeah, Kuanis, yeah.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Uh, schedule meetings, anything you'd like to highlight? Or any, any other council communications? Schedule of meetings?
Um, so, schedule of meetings, we have the Christmas Tree curbside collection on January the seventh, of course, today. Yes, so the city council work session, um, will be Thursday, I'm sorry, that's today also, getting to what's coming. The business roundtable on the eighth, uh, the EDA meeting on the ninth, and then the city council on the tenth. We'll have the second Christmas Tree curbside collection on the fourteenth, which is the last one, um, planning commission on the sixteenth, and planning commission work session on the twenty-third. I would like to just briefly talk about the fact that next month's work session, we're, we're gonna have sort of a special event, it's a joint meeting, uh, to talk about downtown vibrancy. We've got two presentations planned, should be a, a very interesting meeting. Uh, we were hoping to have this meeting across the hall in the large, uh, classroom, uh, it's not available, so we're currently working on how we're gonna make the timing of that work. It may involve us moving this, the city council work session back thirty minutes so that we can prep the room and have it ready for the meeting.
Okay. Uh, this takes us to open forum, and we have one speaker's card, Mr. Gary Shelley. Welcome, Mr. Shelley.
Thank you very much. I am Gary Shelley, I live at two oh five Indian Springs Road.
I live at two oh five Indian Springs Road. I'm going to speak again about one-ten Harrison Avenue, and I do hope to be wrapping this up here, uh, before too long. I've spoken about it on quite a few occasions. I've been speaking about it because there are so many lessons to be learned from it. There was abundant consensus that it was terrible public policy. The policy was a direct result of town gown tensions, and these same town gown tensions exist today. We must acknowledge that the city council, in conjunction with the city manager, purposely misled the public when it approved the funds for the purchase of the property. Council approved the funds for the project at the March nine, two thousand and six session. Their decision was based in part on a memo from city manager Tuttle that was riddled with dubious assertions. College students quite rightly understood that the project was yet another attempt by the city to keep them from living in neighborhoods close to the college. At the conclusion of that session, Mayor Zeidler thanked David Crane Bule for his efforts in this endeavor, but she did not offer any hint as to the nature of his efforts. This was the first mention of Mr. Crane Bule's involvement. Mr. Crane Bule was the leader of the West Williamsburg Heights Homeowners Group, a group notorious for its opposition to students living in their neighborhood. He claimed to have close relationships with members of the council and with city manager Tuttle. Mr. Crane Bule has spoken many, many times to council with complaints about students living in his neighborhood. Two years after the, uh, two years later, a FOIA request revealed a bombshell. Unbeknownst to the public, on February twenty-second of two thousand and six, two weeks before council approved funds for the project, Mr. Crane Bule contracted to purchase the property. Council never informed the public of this contract, nor the council would quietly arrange for Mr. Crane Bule to assign the rights of his contract to the redevelopment and housing authority. In essence, council agreed to fund the project with taxpayer dollars under the auspices of the RHA, rather than have Mr. Crane Bule assume the risks and responsibilities inherent in his contract. This begs the obvious question. What possible benefit did the public derive from having the RHA undertake the project rather than leaving it in the hands of Mr. Crane Bule and at zero percent interest, no less? I fully understand that council members sometimes inadvertently make mistakes. This was no such occasion. Council was subsequently given numerous opportunities to address its actions, but instead stonewalled the public at every opportunity. In particular, Vice Mayor, and later Mayor, Clyde Holman, who was the council's representative to the RHA and the chief supporter of this project, was asked on numerous occasions why the public was not informed about the Crane Bule contract. Mr. Holman steadfastly refused to comment. Likewise, when asked directly why he refused to comment, he chose not to respond. All of this is on the record. I actually do not lie. The public was purposely denied knowledge of the Crane Bule contract. Clearly, there were no responsible, uh, there were no possible benefits to having the public bear the burden of the one-ten Harrison contract instead of Mr. Crane Bule. We must move forward. There have been changes since two thousand and six. Our council has a different makeup. We have a new city manager. Some things remain the same. There are still town gown tensions. Students still want to live off-campus in neighborhoods within walking distance to the college. Some residents still voice their discontent with students who share their neighborhoods. And council still has done little to help the student cause, in spite of the enormous contributions that the students make to our city. As always, I invite anyone to come forward or contact me if they have comments or disagreements over anything that I have presented. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. If anybody else would like to address council, now's the time to please come forward. Seeing no one, close the open forum. I believe we have an item or two for closed session?
Yes, sir. I move to go into closed session pursuant to section two-point-two dash thirty-seven-eleven of the Code of Virginia for the purposes of discussing one personal matter per sub- paragraph one concerning appointments to boards and commissions, and also one legal matter per subgra- paragraph eight for the purpose of consultation with, on specific legal matters requiring the provisions of legal advice by council concerning a FOIA request.
Second, Ms. Berchem.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
We'll take a brief break and reconvene in closed session.